Good afternoon. We ready?
Yeah, I'm sorry. We have just some recordings to do first. Thanks. I'll let you know. Sardines, can we start our recordings? Computer started.
Cloud has started.
Sergeant Lugo, can you give us the opening, please?
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to today's remote New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Consumer Affairs and Business Licensing. At this time, with all panelists, please turn on your videos. To minimize disruption, please place electronic devices to vibrate or silent. If you wish to submit testimony, you may do so at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair Ayala, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you all for joining us. My name is Diana Ayala, and I am the Chair of the Committee on Consumer Affairs and Business Licensing. We are also joined today by my colleagues on the committee, council members Brennan Chin, Koo, Cas Lewis, Powers, Menchaca, Lander, and Rivera. I'm not sure if I missed anyone, but if I did, I will come around to you. Today, we will be hearing a number of bills related to third-party delivery platforms, such as Grubhub, DoorDash, and Uber Eats, and how they treat their contracted delivery workers. The five bills include 2288 in relation to platforms providing insulated bags for delivery workers, and intro 2289 allowing delivery workers to set distance and route limitations for themselves, both of which are sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. We will also hear intro 2294 from Councilmember Lander that would establish minimum payments per delivery. Intro 2296 from Councilmember Menchaca that would establish standards of payment for delivery workers, and intro 2298 from Councilmember Rivera that would ensure that these delivery workers have access to toilet facilities. Throughout the pandemic, food delivery workers have been on the front lines. When lockdown orders and indoor dining restrictions were put in place, it was the delivery workers that helped keep restaurants open and New Yorkers fed. Politicians and the public recognize them as essential workers, and heap much deserved praise on them. However, beyond the rhetoric, these delivery workers have little substantive support. Most of our city's delivery workers are immigrants, and many are undocumented. This means that many missed out on stimulus checks and other forms of government assistance during the peak of the pandemic. They struggled to get PPE, and during the curfew, some of them found themselves target of police enforcement despite being recognized as essential workers. The package of bills that we are hearing today aims to rectify some of the concerns raised by delivery workers. As independent contractors, they are not protected by the city's vast worker protection laws. Similarly, some of these conditions set by third-party delivery platforms force these workers to rush around the city, delivering orders in unrealistic timeframes just to maintain good customer ratings but for very minimal pay. I look forward to hearing from the platforms and the delivery workers themselves on how these bills will improve their working conditions. We will also hear two additional bills today. Intro 2163 from Councilmember Reynoso would allow restaurants to add a surcharge to their bills, provided they pay their tip workers a $15 minimum wage. The City Council had already enacted legislation that would allow restaurants to add a surcharge of no more than 10%, while restaurants are prohibited from operating at maximum capacity and for 90 days after. The purpose of this law was to help restaurants in their economic recovery spurred by the health emergency. Intro 2163 would repeal this law, replacing it with a new surcharge provision linking it to tip worker wages. Like restaurants, tipped workers in the hospitality industry have also been negatively impacted by the economic downturn. According to some reports, the restaurant industry lost 43% of its jobs in 2020, and even those who were able to stay working reported a severe downturn in tips. Unlike back-of-house staff who receive a standard minimum wage, workers in the front of the house, like servers and hosts, rely on tips to supplement their wages. This means that there are times when they earn well below the standard $15 an hour. Furthermore, research has shown that there are tipping disparities along racial and gender lines, meaning that on average, Black women earn $7.75 less than their white male counterparts. By linking restaurant surcharges to a base salary for tip workers, we hope to mitigate some of these inequities. The final bill we will hear feedback on today is intro 2311 from Councilmember Powers. Under this bill, restaurants would have access to customer data collected by third-party platforms. This data is one of the most important tools restaurants can use to develop marketing strategies and customer relations. However, under the current contracts, third-party delivery platforms do not allow restaurants to retain this data, depriving them of key information to develop and grow their businesses. The hospitality industry was hit hard by COVID-19 pandemic, and as the industry begins to recover, this committee will ensure that delivery workers, restaurant staff, and restaurant owners have the protections they need to succeed. As you can see, we have quite an agenda to get through today, and I thank you in advance for your patience as we ensure that every stakeholder gets their opportunity to speak. I am going to invite the various bill sponsors to make a short opening statement on their bills, but before I do that, I want to thank committee staff, Legislative Council Stephanie Jones, Policy Analyst Noah Mixler, and Leah Skripic for putting this hearing together. I will now turn it over. I'm sorry to which council member, I think it's Councilmember Brennan.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks to legislative staff, and obviously, thank you to my colleagues, Councilwoman Rivera and Councilman Menchaca, who have been working very closely on this issue, along with, obviously, the leadership of the Workers' Justice Project. So this is a big day for us here in the Council. Today, we're hearing two pieces of my legislation that I've introduced, which seek to provide just basic protection and benefits to delivery workers. Both these pieces of legislation recognize two important and unfortunate realities to the nature of third-party delivery work. One, that their out-of-pocket costs required to begin this work are substantial, and they act as a barrier to entry for many workers. And two, that many workers are penalized for failing to have adequate equipment and/or for attempting to exercise basic control over their workday. So intro 2289 aims to provide workers with a very crucial protection: the ability to set the distance that they wish to travel while delivering, and the ability to refuse to cross a bridge or a tunnel without being penalized for refusing an order. Intro 2289 is a result of the stories that we've heard from the deliveristas who, while delivering for certain apps, are sent all over the city on their bicycles, sometimes traveling multiple miles between single orders, and sometimes being sent over a bridge or a tunnel into another borough without warning. We've even heard from delivery workers who, one delivery worker who was delivering in Manhattan, he was sent to an address in New Jersey on his bike. For many of these apps, when a worker decides to reject an order based on its distance, they receive a lower rating from the app's internal algorithm, and it has a negative effect on their ability to receive future orders. So it bears repeating that these workers are independent contractors. They should not be required to go wherever these apps assign them for fear of negative repercussions, especially if it jeopardizes their safety. Second, lastly, for me, intro 2288, it's very straightforward and simple. It would require third-party apps to provide workers with insulated bags for food delivery at no cost to the worker. This legislation aims to minimize the costs that a worker incurs on the job. These workers already supply their own bicycles, their own helmets, their own safety equipment, and there's no reason that they should also need to provide bags to keep food warm during delivery. We've heard stories of delivery workers who, lacking delivery bags and whatnot, receive low ratings when the food arrived cold to their customer. Again, a worker should not be penalized because they can't afford to purchase an item that is an necessity for the job. This cost should really rest with the apps. So again, I want to thank my colleagues, and especially the incredible workers who have organized to get us here today, especially the Workers' Justice Project, and thank my colleagues, Councilmembers Rivera, Menchaca, and their legislative staff for their hard work on this package, and of course, to Chairwoman Ayala for all your leadership in getting this done today. This is a big day for us and for the workers. So I appreciate it, and thanks for letting me talk on these bills.
Thank you, Councilmember Brennan. We've also been joined by Councilmember Reynoso. We will now turn it over to Councilmember Lander, prime sponsor of intro 2294, to deliver our opening statement. Councilmember Lander?
Thank you so very much, Chair Ayala. It's really an honor to be one of the sponsors today, along with Councilmembers Rivera, Menchaca, Brennan, and I'm excited also about the tipped worker legislation that Council Reynoso is carrying that I also strongly support. I want to thank you for having this hearing. I want to especially thank the workers for their organizing and their courage, and they're making their voices heard out in the streets. And today, in this hearing, I really look forward to hearing from them. Delivery workers have been feeding us throughout the pandemic, but too often, the app companies have been starving them. Many delivery workers, they perform hard, dangerous, essential work. Imagine riding 10 or 12 hours in the heat today, and yet, they earn far less than the minimum wage, sometimes even just $4 or $5 an hour. DoorDash, Seamless, Uber, and Instacart have exploited the independent contractor loophole to shortchange workers. This is supposed to be a city where every worker earns at least $15 an hour, and we do not have to allow them to continue shortchanging workers. For Uber and Lyft drivers, by requiring that the Taxi and Limousine Commission set a per-trip minimum, we've guaranteed that Uber and Lyft drivers can earn a living wage of at least $17.50 an hour. My legislation, intro 2294, will do similarly for delivery workers. It will require the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection to establish a per-trip payment for food delivery workers in order to guarantee them living wage pay. Now, we may hear from Uber or DoorDash that they can't afford it, but Uber's revenue from delivery service soared 215% to the first quarter of 2021, and they even increased their take rate, what they take, that restaurants or delivery workers don't get, from 11% to 14%. That's hundreds of millions of dollars that went to Uber that could have gone to delivery workers. And DoorDash's revenues jumped threefold. Their CEO received a stock package worth $400 million in December. They can afford to pay their delivery workers a living wage. Intro 2294 will make sure we get it done. I support all the other bills in this package, and I'm honored to be a cosponsor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lander. We've also been joined by Councilmember Kalos. We will now turn it over to Councilmember Menchaca, prime sponsor of intro 2296, to deliver an opening statement.
Thank you. I want to just first start by saying thank you to Chair Ayala and speak Corey Johnson. Without them and the committee staff and central staff, there's no way that we would have gotten to this point. And I just want to say thank you in a moment where so much of what we are trying to do, we are doing with our immigrant New Yorkers, there's no way we can do it without you. And so, both you, Speaker Corey Johnson and Chair Ayala, deserve so much credit for today's hearing. Now, what I want to lift in this conversation is the sheer fact that so many New Yorkers have gotten rich on the backs of our immigrant workers for many years. COVID accelerated the conversation that we're having today, where the apps have taken advantage, and you're hearing from the sponsors about how the different ways we have benefited as New Yorkers without justice. And so, these bills that you're hearing today are about that. My bill is really focused on regulating the apps. The apps have charged workers, essential workers, the deliveristas, for paying their salary using non-banking options. This is something that was brought to my attention over a year ago in Sunset Park, and we submitted an LS request, and here is the bill. The bill will also ensure that workers get paid on time. We know from workers that you're going to hear from today who have not been paid in months. And at this point, I think there are a lot of tactics that apps will use so that they never pay workers their salary. That's going to end, and I'm just really proud to be here with this committee. The workers are going to tell their story. Let's listen to that, and let's move these bills fast. And so, I'm asking all my councilmember colleagues, especially those that have been on the front, Justin Brandon, Carlina Rivera, Brad Lander, Councilmember Ayala, and Chair Ayala, and so many more that have joined this effort. Let's make this happen, and glad to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Menchaca. We will now turn it over to Councilmember Rivera, who's the prime sponsor of intro 2298, to deliver an opening statement.
Hi, can you hear me okay? Okay, great. Sorry. Trying something new. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the committee for holding this important hearing. For the past year and a half, while we battled the COVID-19 pandemic and fought for a just recovery, delivery workers have put their lives and livelihoods at risk, reporting to work every day to keep New Yorkers fed and restaurants afloat. They have been and continue to be just as essential to our city's survival as our healthcare heroes, yet they have not been awarded even a degree of the honor and respect that they deserve. My colleagues and I introduced this package of legislation drafted in partnership with the Workers' Justice Project and Los Deliberistas Unidos to begin to address the dangers, abuses, and inequities facing deliveristas. On average, a delivery worker works 12 hours a day, seven days a week, earning a grand total of $300. That is less than $4 an hour. When they need to take a break or use the restroom, they are denied basic courtesy and treated with hostility by some of the very same restaurants kept open by their labor. They are no safer out in our streets, where they face robberies and violent assaults at the hands of individuals who target them for their valuable e-bikes. Without protected bike lanes and safe street infrastructure, the Deliveristas Continue community has lost several workers to traffic fatalities. Today is a historic day, because after a year of organizing, you will hear directly from the workers fighting for dignity in their workplace, the streets of New York. My bill, intro 2298, would require all restaurants to provide something seemingly very basic: access to bathrooms for delivery workers who are picking up a delivery, except in restaurants where accessing the bathroom would create a serious health or safety risk. The Deliveristas have single-handedly kept restaurants across the five boroughs of business, and yet are often faced to go an entire 12-hour workday without any access to a bathroom. Just outside of my own district, we learned of a restaurant charging delivery workers an astonishing $5 to use their bathroom. The rights and protections we seek to codify and defend in this package are just the minimum of what delivery workers deserve, and it is far past time that we, as a council, stepped in to help deliver justice where it is long overdue. Thank you again, Madam Chair and the committee. Thank you to Speaker Johnson and my colleagues for their advocacy and their collaboration. I especially like to thank the Workers' Justice Project and Los Deliberistas Unidos for their partnership and for entrusting us with this fight. Following today's hearing, I look forward to getting these bills passed. And finally, this fight did not start in the council, and nor does it end here. I call on our city agencies to step up and do their part to ensure these workers are regarded with dignity and respect, and provide a safe, supportive environment to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera. We will now turn it over to Councilmember Powers, prime sponsor of intro 2311, to deliver an opening statement.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair. I'm going to keep my comments a little shorter, since I know you have a lot on the agenda today. But thanks for giving me time to speak on intro 2311, which requires third-party food delivery services, which are entities that are providing restaurants with online order and delivery services to share certain information with restaurants about customer data. We're living in an era where more and more people are turning to technology, and the cloud is as an intermediary to traditional brick-and-mortar services. There is truly an app for everything these days, and I know I take advantage of them as well. But we do want to make sure that we strike the right balance and equity between those that hold the information and those that supply the goods and services, and that's ultimately the intention of my bill. The goal is to allow for more information sharing and transparency between the platforms that retain and hold that data, and the restaurants rely on them, but to be able to use that data when it comes to marketing and understanding their business. We have heard from folks about their concerns in terms of protecting privacy data, and eager to hear suggestions from stakeholders on how to best address those concerns and reach a bill that helps do all of the above. And I just have to say, this has been such a hard year for our restaurants and our local businesses, and this is a really good opportunity for us, again, to look and think about ways to keep them surviving here in the city, but also give them a better opportunity to compete and to be able to stay in our communities for a very long time. And so, that's the goal of my bill here today. And I want to thank Chair Ayala for having this hearing, and the speaker as well, for putting the bill on the agenda, and want to thank all the colleagues so far who have signed on to the bill. Would encourage everyone to take a look at it and sign on, and look forward to hearing comments. So, thank you, Chair. Look forward to your testimony.
Thank you. And before I turn it over to our moderator, Stephanie Jones, I just wanted to take a moment to remember Francisco Villalba Betinho, who was murdered in my district in April. Francisco was a delivery worker who, after his day of work, was sitting in a park bench when he was murdered, from what we presume was someone trying to steal his bike, to steal his livelihood. And I want to thank and acknowledge the work of Los Deliberistas Unidos and Workers' Justice Project for not only shedding light on Francisco's story, but also offering their support to the family and to the entire community. With that, I now turn it over to moderator Stephanie Jones for some procedural items.
Thank you, Chair. I am Stephanie Jones, Council to the Committee on Consumer Affairs and Business Licensing, and I will be moderating this hearing. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone that you will be on mute until you are called on to testify, at which point you will be unmuted by the host. During the hearing, I will be calling on panelists to testify. Please listen for your name to be called, as I will periodically be announcing who the next panelist will be. At this hearing, we will first be inviting testimony from the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, followed by testimony from members of the public. During the hearing, if councilmembers would like to ask a question of the administration or a specific panelist, please use the Zoom raise hand function, and I will call on you in order. We will be limiting councilmember questions to five minutes, which includes the time it takes to answer your questions. For all panelists, when called on to testify, please state your name and the organization you represent, if any. We will now call representatives of the administration to testify. We will be hearing testimony from Sandra Abellas, Acting Commissioner of the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. We will also be joined for questions by Stephen Ettenani, Executive Director of External Affairs at DCWP, Vincent Maniscalco, Assistant Commissioner of Highway Inspection and Quality Assurance of the Department of Transportation, and Miranda Alquist, Assistant Director of Legislative Affairs of the Department of Transportation. At this time, I will administer the affirmation. Administration panelists, please raise your right hands, and I will call on each of you individually to respond. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to councilmember questions? Commissioner Abellas?
I do.
Thank you. Executive Director Ettenani?
I do.
Thank you. Assistant Commissioner Maniscalco?
I do.
Thank you. Finally, Assistant Director Alquist?
I do.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Commissioner Abellas to present her testimony.
Good afternoon, Chair Ayala, and members of the Committee on Consumer Affairs and Business Licensing. I'm Sandra Abellas, Acting Commissioner of the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, or DCWP. And I'm joined today by Stephen Ettenani, our agency's Executive Director of External Affairs. We're also joined by our colleagues from the Department of Transportation, Vincent Maniscalco, Assistant Commissioner of Highway Inspections and Quality Assurance, and Miranda Alquist, Assistant Director of Legislative Affairs. Chair Ayala, it's a pleasure to see you again, and I look forward to working with you and members of the committee on these significant issues impacting New York's delivery workers. I've been with the agency since 2014, and prior to stepping into my current role, I served as the First Deputy. Before joining DCWP, I worked at the New York State Department of Labor, enforcing labor standards and ensuring the health and safety of public employees, and at the Attorney General's Office in the Civil Rights Bureau, protecting our immigrant communities from fraud. This is why I joined DCWP, because I consider our mission of protecting consumers and workers an essential part of ensuring equity and justice in our city. The agency licenses about 59,000 businesses and individuals in approximately 50 different categories. We enforce consumer protection, business licensing, and workplace laws that serve New Yorkers throughout the city, and offer programming that increases access in our city to free financial services for New Yorkers. DCWP's Office of Labor Policy and Standards, or OLPS, enforces our city's workplace protections, including New York City's Paid Safe and Sick Leave and Fair Work Week laws, and it administers the Freelance Isn't Free Act to protect freelancers' right to get paid, and conducts vital education and outreach to workers and businesses on their rights and responsibilities. Throughout the pandemic, DCWP received thousands of complaints and inquiries about workers' rights in New York City. We have investigated and brought successful enforcement actions against employers that violated the rights of essential workers, even up to the point of illegal firings. We've also adapted throughout the pandemic to focus our available tools and resources on the most pressing concerns for workers, including providing referrals on critical economic supports, developing new resources to help workers navigate reopening, and prioritizing the swift resolution of complaints to ensure workers can access their sick leave and receive any compensation to which they're entitled. Another major step our city is taking to protect our city's workers is the passage and implementation of groundbreaking just cause protections for tens of thousands of essential workers in our fast-food industry. For too long, workers in this industry have faced arbitrary firings, at times dismissed for no reason at all. Just Cause, as a new frontier in workers' rights, will bring greater stability and equity to our city's fast-food workers by ensuring there are disciplinary processes in place before our workers terminate it. Turning toward the legislation at hand today, I'd like to take a moment to recognize the incredible efforts and sacrifices made by delivery workers during one of the most difficult times in this city's history. Delivery workers helped carry the city through an unprecedented, ongoing public health crisis. When many of us were isolated in our homes or caring for loved ones, delivery workers were among the essential workers who kept going to work every day, ensuring that New Yorkers could have access to meals and other goods without having to leave home. And while many industries shrank, the number of workers doing deliveries through third-party apps has increased. To that end, DCWP supports protections for these workers. We've worked closely with the partners that the council has engaged with, and are always encouraged to see that workers' rights are at the forefront of conversations in the city. We look forward to working with the council on these important bills to ensure they'll provide meaningful protections to app-based delivery workers, while also making sure they are enforceable once passed. Introduction 2288, which requires a third-party food delivery service to provide insulated food delivery bags for each of its bicycle operators at the company's expense, would be under the purview of DOT. The administration supports the intent of this legislation to reduce financial burdens on workers and to ensure food is properly stored. Delivery cyclists are under significant pressure when traveling far and fast throughout the city to deliver our food. Improving their working conditions also enhances safety on the city's streets, helping keep the cyclists and all New Yorkers safe. Introduction 2298 would require food service establishments that utilize delivery workers to provide those workers with access to the toilet facilities, provided that in doing so, there's no risk to health and safety standards. The administration supports the intent of this legislation, which is consistent with existing employee rights to bathroom access under the Federal Occupational Safety and Health Act, and extends similar protections to app-based delivery workers. There may be challenges in enforcement when determining whether a violation has occurred based on information offered by the worker or the business. Therefore, it'll be a priority to develop clear and understandable standards for workers and businesses, and for the agency to be able to assess violations. Ultimately, our city's delivery workers deserve a right to bathroom access. Introduction 2289 would allow a third-party delivery worker to specify to their food delivery service the maximum distance the worker will travel, and their restrictions on traveling over bridges or through tunnels. This bill directly addresses a significant safety concern of workers, and we support its intent. Introduction 2294 would require DCWP to commission a study of working conditions for third-party delivery workers, as well as determining minimum per-trip payments for these workers to be established by rule. While DCWP does not have information on the inner workings of the industry or the staff required to develop minimum pay rates, we do look forward to discussing how this would work with the council and other stakeholders to ensure it translates into real benefits for delivery workers. Introduction 2296 would require DCWP to establish standards for payment for third-party delivery workers, and establish a program to provide real-time and establish a program to provide real-time assistance to delivery workers in disputes with third-party service platforms. DCWP supports the intent of this legislation to ensure delivery workers are properly paid and looks forward to working with the council on this bill. These bills establish a new administrative framework with a significant investment for this group of workers. While DCWP currently lacks the expertise to effectively regulate this industry, we know it operates through a highly sophisticated and constantly changing technology. Additionally, the industry itself continues to adapt very quickly to the market demand for delivery services in the midst of the pandemic, which could mean they're also capable of evading regulations if enforcement is not carefully constructed. To address these concerns, the agency will need to work closely with the council and stakeholders representing our city's delivery workers, restaurants, and other industry experts. Similar to other laws this city has implemented, stakeholders can assist the agency in understanding how this industry operates and help develop standards of protection for delivery workers. And these stakeholders could work with the agency to develop recommendations on an ongoing basis to ensure that we, as a city, are taking necessary steps in the short term to protect workers while we analyze these technology platforms and also set the most appropriate standards for the industry. The structure for Introduction 2294 provides an example of what this approach could look like, ensuring DCWP can gather the needed expertise to set up enforceable standards that are responsive to working conditions in this fast-changing industry and allowing the city to protect and enhance the rights of these delivery workers for years to come. Introduction 2163 would permit restaurants to impose a surcharge of up to 15% in addition to the stated price of individual items, provided that a restaurant appropriately discloses the surcharge to its consumers and provides their tipped workers with an hourly cash wage that is not less than the minimum wage set by the state for New York City. The administration supports the intent of this bill, and we look forward to further discussing with the council. DCWP has long advocated for an end to the state's two-tiered wage system. To cure the serious equity gaps in current wage in our law, action must be taken by the state to eliminate the two-tiered wage system for tipped workers, which is why we've called on the governor many times to eliminate this system for restaurant workers. Lastly, Introduction 2311 would require third-party delivery apps to share customer information with the restaurants with whom those customers are placing orders. Unfortunately, this legislation was only recently added to today's agenda, and the administration is still reviewing its language and impact. One final concern with implementing any new enforcement contemplated in these bills is our current work implementing just cause protections and other new offices. We'll certainly need additional resources to ensure we implement any new mandates effectively. Though it's too soon to tell exactly what resource would be required. Ultimately, we welcome the council's efforts to improve the lives of vulnerable workers in our city. The present time, when many employers are experiencing a labor shortage, we hope that these efforts and our continued partnership can demonstrate that we must increase wages and improve benefits so that these workers can continue to be a part of the economic recovery in New York City. The administration has continuously advocated alongside thousands of workers for $15 minimum wage and groundbreaking legislation such as just cause protections, which brings stability to the lives of so many essential workers. This also includes our agency's priority to bring the consumer protection law into the 21st century. Introduction 1622, with common sense penalties to protect consumers from predatory corporations and tools to protect consumers conducting transactions over the internet and in languages other than English. As always, we value the council as our partner in ensuring that workers' rights are a priority for the city with sound and resource protections for our workers. Effective enforcement, whether on behalf of consumers or workers, depends on a well-calibrated regulatory structure that deters the most harmful activity so that breaking the law in our city is not just a cost of doing business. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I look forward to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will now turn it over to questions from Chair Ayala, followed by questions from other council members. Chair?
Thank you. Considering that we're hearing so many bills and that we have so many of the bill sponsors on at this moment, I would love to give those members an opportunity to ask questions first. I think that I see council member...
Councilmember Menchaca?
Can you hear me? Am I coming in?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful, thank you. So, thank you, thank you, Chair, for this opportunity. And I guess to the Commissioner, I want to focus on my bill that really requires a prompt, a timeline for payment, and a removal of any fee connected to salary. And can you talk a little bit about other instances where you have seen this kind of enforcement from the city that we can look at and bring into this conversation? Because I think you support the intention of the bill, and I think you were looking more at how do we enforce this? Does your team thought about other models that we can bring into this conversation?
Thank you so much, Councilmember Menchaca. I think that, you know, overall, we do have the sense that this is a new industry for our agency to look into. I think that we understand that many delivery workers may work for multiple services at the same time, and it might be difficult for them or confusing to track their payments and make sure that they're being paid correctly. As we learn more about how these different platforms operate, we'll better understand how the fees and payments are actually charged and calculated, and then we can figure out how best to mediate that. I think maybe the closest analogy would be the Freelance Isn't Free Act, but again, it's really early for us to tell what's the best way to implement such thing.
Okay. Because I know we're going to have some ideas as well, and I think part of this is the fact that there are many, many different apps, but that shouldn't preclude the city from creating a regulation that says, here's what you have to follow, and then allowing for a legal recourse from the advocates working with each of these workers to be able to, say, sue the city, or not the city, but sue the... with the support of the city, the apps. And so I think this is kind of what we're thinking about as well. Maybe the next question I have for you is the banking options. So much of what we've been trying to do with NYC is to link our immigrant communities to bank accounts, but also to really understand that sometimes bank accounts are not going to be an option for immigrants and to create other ways for banking to be created. And so maybe, if you can talk a little bit about that and what you might be thinking working with your other commissioner colleagues?
Sure. I think that when it comes to the unbanked, and certainly we've seen a lot of this from the work we've done in our Office of Financial Empowerment, is seeing just what you mentioned, where for some people, they haven't been able to find the right banking products that are suitable for their situation. We do offer free financial counseling throughout the city, and we've continued to do that throughout the pandemic, also offering some remote options for folks while it was unsafe to do so in person. And so we would really be looking with them to see what would be the best options that we could offer people in terms of banking products that don't charge exorbitant fees and that are transparent in terms of their offerings so that we can help match people up, educate them, work with them on their particular situation. So I think we would work with our Office of Financial Empowerment in that regard.
And then lastly, I think one question that I want to drill down on are other models in which the city has told a third-party system, I want to be kind of general about it, that basically says, have to pay your workers on time. Is there anything that exists right now within the city in terms of relationship, including potentially itself? And what kind of regulations that we can really set for these apps that are really kind of growing in scope as well? I think we're all anticipating the world of this third-party. This is why we're trying to fix it here, but this is a longer labor movement work that we have to do, but specifically looking toward a kind of salary timeline requirement.
No, that's a great question. I'm not entirely sure of another model that's so similar here in the city. And again, as I mentioned, these third-party apps, we know these are global companies. They have presences in cities throughout the world. They have different platforms that they use and different models for how they set their pay rates for their delivery workers. And so we'd want to work really closely with the stakeholders, especially the ones that you've gathered here today.
Yeah, just finish your thought, and then I'm... Thank you, Chair.
Bear with me, this is my first one. To gain a better grasp of the work and then develop the clear standards with the advocates on what we should do for this particular bill.
Wonderful. And again, this is your first one, so welcome and looking forward to working.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I see that Councilmember Lander also has his hand raised. If any other councilmembers would like to ask a question of you and you have not yet raised your hand, please do so using the Zoom Raise Hand function. Councilmember Lander?
Councilmember Lander, give me one second, sorry. I just want to recognize that we will also join by...
Thank you so much, and Chair, thank you for letting us ask our questions first. We appreciate that a lot. Commissioner, welcome. It's wonderful to have you. Congratulations on your new position. I know you've been working in this field and in this agency and protecting workers' rights a long time, but it's great to have you as our commissioner at DCWP, so thank you. And thanks for your mentions of Just Cause and the Freelances and Free Act and the work that you guys are doing to diligently enforce existing worker protections. And, you know, we appreciate the point that if we're going to expand on them, we need to have you have the resources to be able to deliver on them. That's clearly true. So I'm going to ask a little about 2294. I appreciate your praise of the approach of having a study and digging in and really understanding. So I'm glad that you like that approach, but I guess it wasn't clear in your testimony whether that means you support the bill. So can you say a little more about if you like the approach, if you agree that time is needed to develop an approach on minimum pay? You know, what is there we need to work on to make sure we can pass this legislation and move forward?
Absolutely, and yes, we do appreciate the concept of having a study to develop the appropriate standards because, as I mentioned, this is a very quickly evolving industry, and we know that the platforms operate differently in how they set their payment rates. So the one, I think, concern that we have is just the timeline to make sure that it is adequate and it does a comprehensive review of what's required to set minimum pay rates. And as you mentioned, the resources for the kind of procurement we would need for experts to conduct this study and determine also how the access can be delivered in terms of the data from the third-party app, since we know this is like primarily like data-driven industry.
Great, all right, those are all really helpful. I think timeline, resources are things we can negotiate, and we're definitely going to have to work on the data. In the case of the TLC, the Uber and Lyft for higher-vehicle app, we had the data being provided to the TLC pursuant to a law that we already had. So that is something that I think we can work on together, as well as resources and timeline. I just, have you had a chance to, you know, to look a bit at the... that study that Mike Reich and James Parrott did, you know, coming out of the legislation that the council passed for minimum trip rates and minimum pay there for higher drivers?
Yeah, we've certainly looked at that as a potential model. Again, we're still in the very early stages of thinking through how it would work in this particular circumstance. The other piece that we would welcome a partnership with you on is also identifying the correct experts that we would want to tap for this kind of expertise because we know that, again, this industry is very particular, and we would love to work with you on identifying who the proper experts would be to figure out the best way forward.
That sounds great. We're going to hear from some of them today, the workers themselves. I hope some of the app companies will testify because even though they may resist some of the legislation, they are critical partners here. If we're going to make this work, we have to make this work with them. And then obviously, there'll be other experts that we can tap into, okay? But yeah, I guess generally, you agree that, you know, in a city with a $15 minimum wage, we want to make sure all workers are earning at least that, you know, after other expenses per hour so they can feed their families and pay their rent?
Yeah, we absolutely think that all workers deserve a certain basic level of support, and we know how expensive it is to live in this city. And so we want to do everything that we can to work with the council and figure out how best to implement the intent of each of these bills.
Thank you very much. We look forward to working with you after this hearing to move forward to pass this bill and then move forward to guarantee that living wage for delivery workers who so, you know, have been there for us, and we really have to be there for them. Thank you very much, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Seeing no other councilor hands raised, I will turn it back to Chair Ayala for any questions. Chair?
Do we have any information of what the average rate per trip payment is at this time? And is that rate comparable amongst...
We actually do not have industry data at this time, but that's one of the things that we would seek to learn through, for example, the study that Councilmember Lander is suggesting.
Can you explain for us the ways that DCWP has engaged delivery workers to educate them, workplace rights, and provide them with financial education through OFP?
Sure. So because we know how essential delivery workers have been throughout the pandemic, DCWP has worked to provide ongoing education to workers and also field inquiries about worker rights throughout this pandemic. One issue that we know has come up is certainly, as you mentioned, access to financial counseling. And so, like I said, we've worked with our providers to make sure that, even throughout the pandemic, there have been some remote options for folks so that they can make appointments and go over their budget and go over their debt and figure out what their goals are and get that kind of support and help. Particularly with Deliveristas, we would want to learn a little bit better about what kind of targeted outreach would be necessary to help them, the languages that they will require, and other questions that they may have so that we can target and tailor our outreach specifically to them if these bills move forward.
So has DCWP engaged with the groups?
We've had ongoing relationships with the partners that you've mentioned here, for sure. I think that the one thing we haven't honed in on is really the needs of this particular subset of workers. Our focus has been on continuing the Paid Safe and Sick Leave, which has been, you know, so critical during the pandemic. And then, like I mentioned earlier, setting up the infrastructure for the just cause implementation that'll be happening in the next couple of months.
And the thing that's so important to just reaffirm in this is that this is new work for DCWP. And on top of that, it's such a dynamic industry. And we want to make sure, as Acting Commissioner Abellos mentioned, that we have all the information on the ground so that we can effectively contemplate and work with council on long-term policies that are going to be very impactful for this industry. And that means convening stakeholders, the apps, the workers themselves, the folks that I'm sure will be testifying in forthcoming panels. And, you know, that's something that we're going to be leaning on to help inform, you know, work in this space.
Has any effort to convening the groups, though, happened before to the hearing? This industry, they're growing really rapidly. So we, I mean, we've had an opportunity, I would say, the last year or so has been pretty opening disparities in pay and really the injustices in how delivery workers are treated. So, you know, this will be whether or not... Treated. So, you know, this will be whether or not probably this hearing, there has been any attempt to engage with uh the different groups. Um, and what, if anything, has come out of conversations? Um, because obviously there's those beyond, you know, pay equity issues right there, also safety concerns. There's so many other layers to this and I, you know, so would love to. Kind of get some insight in terms of what the thought process is, you know, at DCWP in relation to this industry and, you know, um, all of what's been happening.
Yeah, as I mentioned, like, we work closely with the Workers Justice Project, New Immigrant Community Empowerment and and other worker groups. Uh, to make sure that we are preparing information about the laws that we enforce and making sure that they know about their rights and responsibilities and how to access. Additional economic resources that are available to them. And we would do the same thing here, you know, whenever we uh roll out uh some new protections. We'll work closely with our partners to make sure that we're getting to the most frequently asked questions, that we're providing, we're translating them into all the appropriate languages. Um, and that we're making it as plain language as possible, so that it's really accessible to the work community that we're trying to target. And that's the approach that I think we would look at here.
We're, we're so, I'm sorry, Chair. I I just want to say we're so happy that the council has introduced these bills. I think th- these bills are gonna allow us as, you know, the the hearing process is, you know, closer to the beginning of the legislative process than than the end. And I think this is gonna allow our agency to kind of coalesce around some of these ideas and principles that are being raised by the sponsors of these bills. So that we can engage with the stakeholders explicitly around some of these concepts going forward.
Uh, and again, I think that we focus a lot of our, you know, emphasis on worker protection and we've um. However, there has to be a conversation about, you know, the safety, right, and uh in in performing these jobs. You know, as you heard a few minutes ago, you know, I I I had an unfortunate incident where I had a delivery worker murdered in my district. Um, because someone was trying to steal bicycle. A couple of days after that, you know, there were a number of, you know, delivery workers trying to cross over the Willis Avenue Bridge. Who were highlighting um what they, you know, uh, were claiming was an attempt um by um some pedestrians uh to to rob them of their 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 money. And and really, you know, expressing how this was a common occurrence. So um really, how are we engaging uh with the groups and with the workers in a way that allows? For you to really understand what their rights are, um, how they're communicating and reporting these instances to the, you know, to the NYPD. Um, and whether or not, you know, there are other ways that we could be helpful in ensuring that they're doing their jobs as safely as possible.
And we're certainly open to working with our sister agencies and the PD and DOT on any safety issues that come up. And and like you said, to make sure that workers really know where they can go to get these resources, how they can go and file reports, how they can. Um, let us know like where the trouble areas are so that we can work together to make sure that those are those concerns are being addressed.
And just to clarify, because I'm not sure about who this, are there any existing worker protection laws that delivery workers are covered by?
You know, that's something that we're looking into. Our current workplace protection laws really tend to skew towards the traditional employment model. Like, like I mentioned earlier, other than freelances and free, um, which, you know, we've worked very closely with Councilmember Lander on. Um, most of the work that we have done, you know, tends to apply to a traditional employment model. So with um the independent contractors, we would have to look at, you know, what kinds of protections um make the most sense? And how do you implement that in this kind of industry?
Um, can you explain how the, in relation to um the restaurant surcharge bill? Can you explain how the expense and cash of out- these work, working workers?
I'm so sorry. I only caught the first part. I know you're talking about the restaurant surcharge bill, but I didn't hear the exact question.
Can you explain how and cash wages work for restaurant workers?
Oh, sure. So the legislation um that requires tipped workers uh as defined by New York State Code. Be provided at least a minimum wage, not including their tips. So we think that currently, the back-of-the-house workers should already be receiving the minimum wage. Tip sharing, which could benefit the back-of-the-house workers, is currently prohibited by the state. And so we've called upon the state to address that inequality. Um, we think that, you know, because we've advocated for so long for an end to that two-tier wage system. Um, you know, we're looking forward to working with the council on this particular bill. Currently, the Law Department is also reviewing. Um, and we want to circle back uh once they've done their analysis. Uh, to make sure that this bill has the intended impact, which is that if you charge the surcharge, that you are also making sure that you are paying people properly and at least a minimum wage.
Absolutely. Do you have any concerns that this bill will create any uh type of pay disparity between front and back uh of the house staff?
You know, it's possible. I think that, again, we would um call upon the state to really take action here so that. All the, all the workers are paid appropriately and at least get the minimum wage. Um, again, I think that, you know, we'll work with the Law Department and with the council um to see what the impact of the bill might be.
Thank you. Um, and then has again, in relation to the same bill, like DCWP receives any uh customer inquiries into the current COVID nineteen recovery surcharge implemented on the local law?
Sure. So since the COVID surcharge was implemented in October twenty twenty to support struggling restaurant owners. And we do know that restaurants were particularly hard hit by the pandemic. Um, DCWP has been responding to complaints related to restaurant surcharges. Although it doesn't always, the complaints don't always specifically reference the COVID uh surcharge. It could be that the restaurant labeled it differently. Um, but we have issued only two violations where the restaurant actually specifically referenced the COVID surcharge. But we've done uh dozens of inspections to check on that.
Uh, okay. Uh, now, in our. I am considering my colleagues and I see that Councilmember Reyno also has raised his hand, so I will allow uh council member questions.
Starting time.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just wanted to, like, if, uh, it seems like there is a. An agreement between all of us that we should be doing something uh to help the back of the house workers that don't receive any tips. It seems like it's something we agree with, uh, but you're saying that we should leave it to the state to take care of it or that it might be a state issue. Um, but should we, should we find? That we can do something, that your law department agrees that what we're asking for is legal and can be done and we are not preempted by the state? Then it is my understanding that you would be supportive? So because it achieves the goals that we've all set forth here?
I I certainly, in the agency, the administration certainly supports the intent of this bill. I think what we wanted to make sure is that in our analysis, that it does have its intended impact. And I think my references to the state are really um to to note just their role in setting um the minimum wage throughout the state. And also to enforce uh that the minimum wage is being paid to workers. And so for us, we certainly look forward to working with the council and the Law Department. Um, on other approaches to get to the same ending place, which I think we all certainly agree on that workers should be getting at least a minimum wage.
Yeah, but um what other approaches is there to guaranteeing that tipped workers get a minimum wage? Because what we did, and I just wanted to let the council, like, just be aware, what we did was we allowed for restaurants, um, one second. We allowed for restaurants to get an increase in how much money they bring in, how much revenue they bring in. Um, and after getting that done, um, there was no increase, no opportunities given to the tipped workers and to the people in the back of the house. We solely assisted the restaurants. Um, and and that's a, that's an issue. Um, one, I don't think the surcharge we put out actually was used by restaurants, and I don't necessarily think that restaurants thought it was helpful in any way. Um, you know, I, the outdoor dining bill was more of a way to help restaurants than these than these surcharges. I don't think these surcharges are actually helpful to restaurants per se. Um, but if we're gonna look out for the restaurants, which I think we should be doing, and allowing for the surcharge to exist if they think it's of value. But why not also take care of the workers that were working during COVID? Um, and were like frontline workers, having to put on masks and put their lives in danger and receive the same pay that they were receiving prior to uh, prior to COVID. Um, it was a high risk with no reward. Um, while we're looking out for the interests of the businesses, which I think is important, and I don't want to take that away from them, we should also be looking out for the workers. So I just want to know, again, if we're able to achieve the goals that we're setting forth. Um, which is to help these tipped workers and it is legal, what the intent of the bill is actually legal, then what I'm understanding is that the city would have no objections.
Well, I think that part of what you're raising is that um workers also have to complain oftentimes that they're not getting paid properly. With respect to how broadly the COVID surcharge was used, that's also, that's an interesting question. I actually don't know how broadly it was used and and perhaps the council has more data on that. Um, but yes, if if after the Law Department's review, we certainly support the intent of this because we do want to see people getting paid properly. You know, at the moment, it's really incumbent upon workers to make sure that, you know, and if they do reach out to our office, I want you to know that we will, you know, work with them. And make sure that they have the information that they need uh to be able to, even if, even if we can't do anything about it at the moment, we will refer them out to the right place. Um, so that they do get support and help, because we do agree with you that, you know, these workers have been working throughout the pandemic. Um, and that they should be paying at least a minimum wage. Um, and and it's it's a balance of supporting both the restaurants and also their workers.
And and the last thing I would say is that we have something called the itemized, itemized pricing that exists for restaurants. Um, that, I mean, for supermarkets. Um, it's not a bill that we have on the docket, but it's a bill that existed in a time when uh. When we had no scanners, right? There was no scanners, so we had to put a price on every single item. Now that we have scanners, it doesn't make any sense. And we want to help businesses and supermarkets and bodegas. This is the um most often and commonly used fine by DCA for restaurants, uh, for bodegas and supermarkets, which have, that that has no more value. Because everything we do or we've done moving forward is technology-based. It is just scanned. A scan will always scan the correct item and always make sure the price is correct. Um, and I just.
Time expired.
We should think about, and I hope DCA can be supportive on getting rid of um the number one fine being given to restaurants and bodegas in a time when we need to be looking out for businesses, not hurting them. But um, thank you so much for this being your first time. I really appreciate you being here. Um, and I appreciate you answering all of our questions. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. And we're open to working with the council on on making uh updates like that. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Reyno. So, uh, Mr. Rettonani, did you have a question? Did you have something that you wanted to add? Or I started, no? Steven, no question? Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, I just have two final questions. So regarding intro twenty-two eighty-nine, um, there there obviously there have been some concerns. Could, could the ability to opt out of the bridge in summer crossing reduce deliveries in certain New York City uh neighborhoods? Is that a concern?
You know, I think that although twenty-two eighty-nine, it could definitely be a key safety protection for delivery workers. As you mentioned, there are definitely safety concerns that delivery workers have when they have to travel so far. Um, and under time pressure to really maximize the efficiency of their deliveries. We're not entirely sure how the platforms dictate, you know, the trips that delivery workers take or how they set those routes or under what conditions. So I think, you know, we would need to learn more about how uh what the parameters are um that the different platforms allow you to set. And then see, you know, what the potential uh ramifications of that would be. So I think it's too soon probably to answer your question.
I I would imagine that the same is is true with the next question, but I have to ask anyway. Um, the 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 bill also prohibits decreasing the number of trips offered to delivery workers that are consistent with the parameters the workers have set. Does DCWP foresee any issues with anticipating whether or not the number offered is less than what it should be?
Well, I think, again, we would want to learn more about how the apps operate. Because, for example, if you were to set certain parameters, but they're too restrictive, then that in and of itself could limit the number of trips that you might take. And so learning how the apps operate and how much uh leeway a driver has to set those parameters would be really important for us. Um, before we recommend um which ways would would really fulfill the intent of the bill. I hope that helps answer your question. Some.
Uh, thank you. I, I'm not sure if we have any other questions. Um, I don't see any.
And Chair, I just want to add, you know, thank you so much again for having us participate in this hearing. It's, these issues are really important. We really value uh this opportunity to bring to the forefront the the hard work and the sacrifices that the delivery workers have made. And we look forward to working with you on figuring out some of the details um and how we can support uh the intent of all these bills.
And we appreciate your willingness to want to be a partner in this.
Absolutely.
I actually have no further questions, assuming that there are no other uh questions. I just want to move it over to the.
Thank you, Chair. Um, we will now turn to public testimony. I'd like to remind everyone that unlike our typical council hearings, we'll be calling individuals one by one to testify. Each panelist will be given two minutes to speak. Please begin once the sergeant has started the timer. Councilmembers who have questions for a particular panelist should use the raise hand function in Zoom, and I will call on you after the panelist has completed their testimony. For panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and the sergeant arms will give you the go-ahead to begin upon setting the timer. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. We will, and I would like to now welcome Angelo Cucusa to testify, followed by Gustavo Aceh, and then Wijaya Huapa. Angelo?
You may begin.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Angelo Cucusa, and I am the organizing director of the Transport Workers Union of America, speaking on behalf of our one hundred and fifty thousand members across the country. I'm here today to testify in full support of most Deliveristas Unidos and all New York City app-based worker, food delivery workers. Our union leadership stands alongside these workers and their demands for dignity and respect while providing an essential service to both their customers and the restaurants who feed our city. These food delivery workers have worked tirelessly, with many of you, to see introduction of a series of bills targeting the services they provide. And TWU is providing testimony today to ensure that these bills or any other food bills that come forward for food delivery workers see their way to the full council floor for a vote as soon as possible. Of particular interest to our labor organization is Bill twenty-two ninety-eight, which seeks to require food establishments to provide toilet facility access to delivery workers. It is almost absurd that in twenty twenty-one, there would be a need for such a mandate. And there's absolutely no reason why this bill should not be passed unanimously by the council. It is ridiculous that in an almost post-pandemic world, we actually have members on community boards, like Community Board Seven of the Upper West Side of Manhattan. Refusing to support such a bill for fear of upsetting restaurant owners who take for granted the services food delivery workers provide to them and their so-called customers. When you have community boards out there who think that food delivery workers should not be using a toilet, the apps have won. TWU members, whether a New York City bike share mechanic, an airline baggage handler like myself, or a subway train operator, are not unlike food delivery workers. We are all essential, and as a result, we expect restaurant and bar owners to truly value the services being provided by app-based food delivery workers. They risk their lives working throughout the pandemic to feed New Yorkers, and they continue to do so as businesses bounce back. The least restaurant owners and staff can do is allow them to use the bathroom when needed before picking up food they will deliver on their behalf. As a lifelong Brooklyn resident, I am. Waste another day in passage of these six bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Angelo. Before we continue, I see State Senator Jessica Ramos has joined us. Um, Senator Ramos, would you like to testify, please?
Hi, good afternoon. Yes, I'd be honored. Thank you so much for having me. Uh, good afternoon to everyone. Committee Chair Diana Ayala and members of the Consumer Affairs and Business Licensing Committee. I'm New York State Senator Jessica Ramos, and I represent the thirteenth district in Queens, where the largest concentration of food and hospitality workers in New York resides. Many of my neighbors work as deliveryistas, which proved to be an essential service throughout the pandemic, and I'm thankful for having this important conversation today that will surely lead to improvements in their work lives. Since I have been in office, I have introduced and passed legislation to legalize the main tool of their trade, e-bikes, in the state legislature. And most recently, I've championed legislation to bring cargo bikes to our streets as a means to reduce truck traffic and therefore carbon emissions in our air with the added benefit of addressing occupational injuries and illnesses that arise from long-term, literal backbreaking work in the delivery industry. The deliveryistas are my neighbors and the backbone of my community. Their safety and their autonomy is my number one concern. Over the past two weeks, DoorDash, Uber, Seamless, Grubhub, and other delivery apps have schemed to introduce legislation behind the backs of these workers. They want to amend our state labor laws to thwart their rights on the job under the guise of collective bargaining. One of the most egregious parts of the so-called Right to Bargain Bill is that it undercuts delivery workers' local organizing efforts. And I am here in support of the deliveryistas' right to organize on the city level and their fight to set limits on their travel, to a living minimum wage, to transparency in salaries and tips, access to bathrooms, to provisions of equipment like insulated food bags, and certainly the means to recover stolen wages. Most workers have managers to supervise them, but deliveryistas are disciplined by an algorithm. Currently, if a worker denies making a specific trip, they run the risk of being deactivated by the app for an undetermined amount of time. There are no clear guidelines on this, and there's no formal process to change it. So intro twenty-two eighty-nine by Councilmember Brennan will allow these workers to put their protection and safety above the bottom line of these apps. I also call on the city council to pass Councilmember Landers' intro twenty-two ninety-four so the deliveryistas can make a living wage. Just like in twenty-eighteen, when the city set a minimum wage for app-based drivers, the city's initiative to set the minimum wage for deliveryistas allows for a true accounting of our city's unaffordability. Right now, there's no rhyme or reason set for how much workers will be paid per trip, and there are no guidelines from the government that specifies delivery to pay. I also support intro twenty-two eighty-eight by Councilmember Brennan to provide equipment to deliveryistas to perform their jobs, and intro twenty-two ninety-six by Councilmember Menchaca to eliminate fees and hurdles for workers to receive their tips. It really is a moral failing on the part of the, the delivery industry that we actually need to legislate, uh, how, how to allow deliveryistas to use restrooms in the restaurants they are picking up food from. It's an utter embarrassment that we need to legislate basic human dignity, but that's what Councilmember Rivera is doing in intro twenty-two ninety-eight. None of your efforts here in the city council would be possible if app companies get their way with that so-called Right to Bargain Bill they want to introduce in the state legislature. Drafts we've seen destroy the right for cities to improve their labor standards, preventing bodies such as your own from passing any legislation that relates to app-based companies regarding, and I quote, "all matters." It is my hope that if and when this dangerous piece of legislation is officially introduced, you will continue to stand shoulder to shoulder with me and my neighbors, the deliveryistas, to stop them. I applaud the City Council Committee on Consumer Affairs, Chair Ayala, and Councilmembers Rivera, Landor, Menchaca, and Brennan for working directly with the deliveryistas to sponsor these bills. And I preemptively thank all the council members who will vote in their favor. Thank you. Thank you all for caring about my neighbors.
Thank you, Senator. I see that Councilmember Lander has his hand raised. Councilmember?
Senator, I just want to make sure that we thank you for being such a champion of your neighbors and all our neighbors and those workers up there. You know, as you noted, if that legislation that has not yet been introduced would pass, many of the pieces of legislation we're hearing today would be preempted. I know for certain that my bill to set a minimum pay standard would be, and your courage and voice and just tireless fighting on behalf of workers in general, uh, and today on behalf of delivery workers really, uh, stands out. And then that you would come to our hearing, you know, and pay us the honor of, uh, talking with us about the laws we're considering. Uh, we really appreciate. So thank you for being a champion up there.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Lander. Look, we have to stick together. For those of us who truly believe in worker power and their ability to organize for themselves, I want the city council to be able to protect them in these ways. It's important that the city council has the power to do this. Our cost of living is just so high here in New York that it, their pay really should not be determined by their employers, especially when they have no real union to represent them. So thank you all for your efforts.
Thank you, Senator, for joining us. Next, we will call on Gustavo Aceh, followed by Lijia Hualpa, and then Teodora Flores. Gustavo?
You may begin.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Gustavo Aceh. Soy repartidor de comida y miembro del Proyecto Justicia Laboral y, y, y líder de los Deliveristas Unidos. Hoy es un día muy importante para nosotros, los repartidores de comida, porque hoy hemos luchado para poder ser escuchados como trabajadores esenciales. Hoy el Consejo Municipal de la Ciudad de Nueva York tendrá la oportunidad de escuchar los testimonios de mis compañeros que mantuvimos a flote esta ciudad. Hemos sido reconocidos y aclamados como trabajadores esenciales, pero eso no significa nada para nosotros. Por esta razón hemos iniciado con este primer paquete de legislaciones que nos permitirá hacer este trabajo con dignidad y respeto. Esperamos tener respaldo de todos ustedes para mantener la protección necesaria para seguir repartiendo comida, medicina, despensas de alimentos y otros productos esenciales, puesto a que estas aplicaciones cada día son más populares. Hay mucho por hacer y por nuestro trabajo, que sea digno. Y nosotros, los trabajadores, hemos estado enfrente de esta pandemia, y aquí seguimos en la calle repartiendo comida, sin importar si hace calor, frío, o a qué hora sea. Y la ciudad no nos reconoce como esenciales, como hechos. Son solo palabras, no, no son hechos aún. En este paquete de legislaciones será un paso para las aplicaciones empiecen a darle respeto que nos merecemos. También asegurarse que haya una transparencia en los pagos de las tropinas, en lo personal. He visto las irregularidades de estas aplicaciones. Es sustante cómo ver que las aplicaciones hacen y desaparecen nuestras, aparecen, desaparecen nuestras tropinas. El sistema también de restaurantes también. Es duro ver que las gratificaciones de los clientes a veces no llegan a nosotros. Hemos hecho ese trabajo arriesgando nuestras vidas en la calle. Hoy, yo sé que muchos no entienden el valor de denunciar estas irregularidades por el, por el miedo, pero aquí estamos haciendo visible nuestro movimiento. Y esperamos contar con el apoyo de ustedes, y en verdad lo merecemos que nos traten como esenciales. Es como lo han dicho que somos, y creo que sí lo merecemos que este paquete pase para que el trabajo de los repartidores sea un trabajo más digno.
I'm gonna be briefly translating. Uh, my name is a different corporate member of the Workers Justice Project and the leader of Los Deliveristas Unidos. Today is a very important day for delivery workers.
I don't want to
the city running. We have been applauded as essential workers, but that's not enough for us. For, for this reason, we introduced the first package of legislation that will make our work more dignified and more respected. We hope, we hope to get your support since this package of policies will guarantee some protections for us. The workers who are delivering your food, your medicine, your groceries, you're essential. These apps have become more popular every day. There is a lot more to do to make our labor more dignified. We deserve protections because we are the essentials who are in the front lines of this pandemic. Still, delivering your food, your essentials, despite extreme weather conditions. It is time for this city to recognize us as essential with actions, not with words. This package of legislation is the first step to guarantee the respect that we deserve and also ensure that there is more transparency in the payment of our tips. Personally, I have seen these irregularities of these apps. It is frustrating to see how these apps are, are disappearing our tips and for the restaurant, and for the restaurant systems to show us something different than the apps. It is hard to see that the customer's gratuity doesn't get to into our account. Many of my coworkers don't have the courage to report this irregularity because of the fear they have when it comes to confronting these companies. But here we are, on behalf of them, making visible our reality with these apps. This, the summer is, this summer season is, is very hard for, for food delivery workers who struggle and we barely make enough to cover our daily expenses. I have actually made little as thirty, thirty dollars a day, working from seven AM to eight PM. These apps manipulate the algorithm to their benefit without any consideration of concerns about our reality and working conditions. At the end of the day, we are disposable labor. When they look, when they no longer need us, they deactivate us without reason, without any kind of explanation. For this reason, we're organizing as the Delivery Workers United, and won't be silent anymore. Today, you have the opportunity to, um, listen to, to us, the essential workers, with actions, not with words. We look forward in passing this legislation that will continue to provide protections to the essential workers of New York City.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Lijia Hualpa, uh, Teodora Flores, and then Saru Jaiyaraman. Lijia?
Yeah, here I am. Sorry, technology translation. Um, so my name is Lijia Hualpa. I am the executive director of the Workers Justice Project, a workers' rights organization that represents New York City food delivery workers, house cleaners, delivers, and essential workers who are placed, who are playing an irreplaceable role in our city's recovery. Since last year, Workers Justice Project has been responding to the most basic human needs of app-based delivery workers, who were left to survive without economic relief, without unemployment insurance, without health insurance, without paid sick time leave, without workers' comp, and most importantly, without essential workers' rights protection. We have been witnessing how New York City's most essential workers are dehumanized and treated as disposable labor. As delivery workers were invisibilized by this pandemic, WJP has been lifting up their dignity by helping them band together as Los Deliveristas Unidos, or the Delivery Workers United. For more than a year, New York, New Yorkers, including yourselves, have been relying on apps like DoorDash, Grubhub, Uber Eats, and others to transport your food, your medicine, your groceries, and other essentials. But what these apps have failed to tell you is that their delivery drivers are not paid a living wage. I, I told not to ask for a restroom when they pick up your food. And are working in constant fear of being deactivated or terminated for demanding better working conditions. These tech companies are making billions in pandemic profits by stealing the tips of delivery workers and charging high percentage fees from your local restaurants and for consumers like yourselves. The truth is that delivery workers are barely, are barely able to feed their own families, pay their rent by mostly relying on tips as a form of wage. As delivery apps keep expanding their market to deliver groceries, medicine, and other essentials, workers are becoming victims of ruthless exploitation that puts their lives at risk with no guarantee of payment in case of death, a serious injury, or no protection against unsafe working conditions. When a delivery worker gets injured or dies while on duty with their most of these workers have to pay for all their medical costs. I'm just gonna end like this. There has been eleven workers, invisible heroes, who were killed this past year while delivering the food for New York, for New Yorkers. And I, it is important not, it is important to mention their names. And I'm gonna briefly just mention because their names cannot be invisibilized. Juan Cruz, Victoria Gilaro Guzmán, Adrian Poyot, Juan Luis, Luis Sucoargo, Alejandro Santos Escamilla, Maipo Basurto Larino, Esther Ernesto y Sidoro Guzmán, Martín Moran, Francisco Villalba, Reinaldo Rodríguez, Luis Alvarado. These are just some of the voices that were invisibilized by the apps who continuously exploit and put at risk the livelihood of New Yorkers who live and work in our city as essential workers. Now, would you listen to them? Would you honor and protect them by passing this six landmark proposals that will set the example for the rest of the country? We look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lijia. Next, we have Teodora Flores, Saru Jaiyaraman, and then Candace Tolliver. Teodora?
Hello, my name is Carlos Hernandez, and I currently work at Chick-fil-A, and I have been in the fast food industry for the past two years. I'm here today to offer my support and solidarity to the, to the deliveryista workers in their fight for dignity before the city council. Fast food workers like myself share many of the same struggles with delivery workers. We are united in our fights for worker rights. At my store, I see how stressed out delivery workers are when it comes to pick up orders, and I see how hard their job is. Like them, I am also a frontline worker during the pandemic. Like theirs, my job as a fast food worker is very taxing and physical. For instance, my feet and my back often hurt after a long week. And just like delivery drivers here today, fast food workers have been fighting throughout the pandemic in the hope that we can change our lives and our jobs for the better. Over the last year, fast food workers have organized at restaurants throughout the city and testified before this very council. And it paid off. This past December, the council voted to pass groundbreaking just cause legislation that provides me and my coworkers with protections on a job that we never had before. Now, all of a sudden, we no longer have, have to fear being fired without a reason. Now we have rights. Fast food and delivery are two sides of the same coin. Together, we have braved the worst days of the pandemic, setting aside our own safety to feed all types of New Yorkers. I am grateful to the council for the solitary we, you have shown to the for fast food workers of New York City today, here, delivery drivers near the same solitary. Because when you get down to it, their demand is ultimately the same as ours. Dignity and justice for the essential workers who kept the city going through the worst pandemic we ever seen. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you, Carlos. Next up, we have Saru Jaiyaraman, uh, Candace Tolliver, and then Russell Jackson. Saru?
Your time will begin.
Hi, everybody, and thank you so much. Uh, Chair Ayala, Councilmember Reynoso, the champion of our bill, Councilmember Lander, who's the champion of all workers all the time, and all of you who are, uh, fighting so hard for so many different workers. I want to definitely first start by saying we stand in solidarity with the deliveryistas and their struggles today. Kudos to them for their courage. I'm here to speak today on intro two one six three about tipped workers. Uh, first to say who tipped workers are because I think quite often the Restaurant Association confuses us. Uh, over two-thirds of tipped workers in New York are women. Over seventy-five percent are immigrants. They are overwhelmingly people of color, mostly women of color, working in very casual restaurants, IHOPs, Denny's, mom and pop diners across New York City. They mostly do not work in fine dining. And even prior to the pandemic, this subminimum wage, which is a direct legacy of slavery, a way for the industry to hire black people at emancipation and not pay them anything, has been a source of incredible poverty and sexual harassment for a mostly female workforce that has to tolerate inappropriate customer behavior to get tips, to make up their base wage. To clarify, to answer the question that was asked earlier, I don't think it was clearly answered. Tipped workers get a subminimum wage of ten dollars in New York, and tips are supposed to bring them to the full minimum wage, but often don't. In fact, the Obama administration reported an eighty-four percent violation with regard to tips bringing people to the full minimum wage. Now, during the pandemic, the situation got so Now, during the pandemic, the situation got so much worse. Workers reported that tips went down 50% to 75%, and health risks, hostility, and harassment went way up, with hundreds of New York women reporting that they were asked repeatedly by male customers to take off their masks so men could judge their looks and their tips on that basis. A life-threatening situation, and frankly disgusting. Well-intentioned, the surcharge bill that the city passed to support struggling restaurants has hurt these workers. We surveyed several hundred earlier this year. 33% of New York City workers report that their restaurant employers using the surcharge, and 60% of those workers say their tips have been cut in half by the surcharge. This bill would solve that problem by requiring employers, providing them more than enough to cover the wage increase, and requiring employers to pay these workers a full minimum wage like every other worker in every other industry. And by the way, that is what workers are calling for before they come back to work. We surveyed 3,000 workers. 53% say they're leaving the restaurant industry. 78% say the only thing that will make them come back is a full livable wage with tips on top. And so it has to be understood, this bill is not just important to protect workers who got hurt by a surcharge bill that the council passed, it's also essential to allow the New York City restaurant industry to reopen. The speakers' lawyers have said that it's legal. The City Hall lawyers have said that it's legal. In fact, the mayor ran a similar program already that was declared legal. There is no legality issue here. There's an inertia issue here, and the inertia has led to workers who you all care about, I know, being hurt by a well-intentioned bill that has cut their tips in half. Every day that goes by, their tips get cut by this surcharge, and we need you, please, to rectify it through Intro 2163. Biden has made ending the subminimum wage a top priority. New York City can lead, New York City Council can lead, by first saying, if you're gonna have the privilege of adding a surcharge, you must have the requirement to protect workers, paying them a full livable wage with tips on top.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Lander has his hand raised. Councilmember Lander?
Thank you. Just a very quick question, Saru. Thanks for being here. Are there other cities that have taken some actions? You know, obviously, we want the state to move forward to one fair wage, but, you know, and we'll all keep pushing for that together. But in the interim, I like this idea of us taking a step here and I praise Councilmember Reynoso for his bill. Are there other cities that have similarly taken some kind of action in the absence of state action to push forward?
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, first of all, cities that are able to go to one fair wage, some have done it. Flagstaff, Arizona, moved to one fair wage. But during the pandemic, multiple cities created programs to provide restaurant owners with privileges or benefits if they moved to a full minimum wage with tips on top. Chicago provided a big program called High Road Kitchens, where they provided cash grants to restaurants, some form of revenue, if they transitioned to a full minimum wage. Detroit did the same exact thing. Boston, we worked with Mayor Walsh, who's now become Secretary of Labor, to institute a similar program. He used stimulus funding to provide cash grants to restaurants if they commit to moving to one fair wage. As you all know, New York City worked with us to do the same thing, and this would be an extension of that program, which is to say, restaurants are right now voluntarily moving to one fair wage because they have to, to get workers to come back to work. There's a massive shortage. We're not calling it worker shortage, it's a wage shortage. It's workers saying, we won't go back without full minimum wages. So, New York City realized that and has been rewarding restaurants for moving in this direction. This surcharge bill wouldn't be an extension of that. Let's reward restaurants that are willing to move already voluntarily in this direction by allowing them to have some additional revenue through the surcharge. And let's ensure that the surcharge, it already exists, a COVID surcharge, has protections built into it, because right now, employers can use that surcharge for anything. As Councilmember Reynoso said, there was a lot of concern. You rightfully wanted to help restaurants. You've got to ensure workers are protected and help workers as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Saru. Next, we have Candace Tolliver, followed by Russell Jackson, and then Jessica Wong. Candace?
Your turn, we'll begin.
Hi, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair Ayala and members of the committee. My name is Candace Tolliver, and I'm the Vice President of SEIU Local 32BJ. 32BJ is the largest building service union in the country with over 85,000 of our members living in New York City metro area. 32BJ supports Intro 2288, 2289, 2294, 2296, and Intro 2298. These bills provide needed and overdue reforms that will improve the working conditions of one of our most important yet vulnerable workforces. These bills would ensure that, one, the cost of insulated food delivery bags are not cast onto the workers; two, give workers control over the maximum distance they will travel in a work time; three, establish a method for determining minimum pay; and four, provide bathroom access; sorry, and number five, prevent fees from being charged to workers for receiving their pay. Food delivery workers have played a crucial role in the pandemic. While many of us were sheltering in place, these workers were venturing out into the restaurants and into our apartment buildings, putting their lives at risk to keep us fed. Food delivery workers also played a crucial role in keeping restaurants open, thus saving many small businesses and restaurant jobs. These are basic human rights that all workers deserve. Despite these important roles, food delivery workers find themselves without many of the protections that most workers take for granted, such as being protected by a legal floor on compensation and even having access to a bathroom. Food delivery workers, our workforce, composed of mostly people of color and immigrants. Thus, it is not surprising that, just like other similarly situated workers, farm workers and domestic workers, sorry, I was getting a call while I'm talking, farm workers and domestic workers, they have been treated as less than by our law. Were you talking to me? I'm sorry, I heard a voice.
I know, you think I did.
Keep going, okay. However, today, the council has an opportunity to recognize these workers, that these workers are essential workers and are deserving of protection of the law. 32BJ looks forward to working with the workers, advocates, stakeholders, and the council on finalizing these important policies. I particularly want to emphasize how important it is for the city to give itself the power to collect and analyze data as it seeks to formulate protections for delivery and other gig workers. Lastly, I want to thank Los Deliveristas, Unidos, and the Workers' Justice Project for their efforts in food working condition for food delivery workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Candace. Next up, we have Russell Jackson, followed by Jessica Wong, and then Andrew Ridgey. Russell?
Your turn, we'll begin. Hi, yes, my name's Russell Jackson. I am the chef-owner of Reverence in Harlem. New York needs restaurants, and restaurants need customers. Without the staff, all the customers in the world won't matter. 50% of workers say that they're leaving the industry because they view jobs as exploitive, and a two-tiered wage system perpetuates that. Lots of restaurant owners, they want to do the right thing, like we do, and pay good wages. But low-road employers are shortsighted, don't have a full understanding of the long-term aspect of what they're doing to the industry. They continue to leverage the poverty level wages to drive down the understanding and true cost of food and hospitality in the minds of the consumers, putting high-road employers at a competitive disadvantage. This surcharge, and the support of this surcharge sends several signals to the workers. It sends information that the employers are committed to fair wage practices, and that these are good jobs. To the consumers, it allows them to understand that their charges are going to higher wages and investment in improved working conditions for all of their staff. To Albany, and where they have failed to support the restaurant workers, the city needs to lead the way. And I've been fighting for this well over, since 2009, my time in San Francisco, and now I'm here in New York. It's imperative that the city takes the initiative to be the first in on this. We can lead the way in the right way and make sure that the rest of the country is following us. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. Next, we have Jessica Wong, followed by Andrew Ridgey, and then Kathleen Riley. Jessica?
Your turn, we'll begin.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jessica Wong, and I'm a service industry professional. I worked with Best in New York karaoke Bar and Lounge. Today, I'm speaking in support of Intro 2163, sponsored by Councilmember Reynoso, which would allow restaurants to permanently add a surcharge if they pay their tip workers a full minimum wage with tips on top. The federal government and New York State have offered up billions in restaurant relief to restaurant owners, but restaurants cannot recover without real relief for the workforce. We rely on the restaurant industry to help New York State's economy, and the restaurant industry depends on its workers. New York City can take the first step towards raising the wages for tip workers to the full minimum wage with tips on top as an urgent matter to let New York's restaurant industry fully reopen and recover. While well-intentioned, the temporary COVID surcharge policy, allowing restaurants to add a surcharge of up to 10%, confused consumers who believe that the surcharge was going to workers when in fact, it was going to employers. If they were planning to tip 20%, the 10% surcharge resulted in them tipping an additional 10%. Intro 2163 would fix this, allowing New York City restaurant owners to permanently add a surcharge of up to 15% as long as they pay their tip employees a full minimum wage with tips on top instead of the subminimum wage. Paying workers a full minimum wage would guarantee a stable base wage regardless of customer reactions to the surcharge. It would also reward restaurants willing to pay the full minimum wage by allowing them to bring in an increased revenue during the pandemic. The subminimum wage was always unjust, but the pandemic made our bad situation worse. Tips went down, and health risks and harassment went up. Restaurants aren't facing a worker shortage. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jessica. Next, we have Andrew Ridgey, followed by Kathleen Riley, and then Mikey Nab. Andrew?
Your turn, we'll begin now. Good afternoon. My name's Andrew Ridgey. I am the Executive Director of the New York City Hospitality Alliance. We are a not-for-profit trade association that represents restaurants and nightlife venues in the Five Boroughs. Today, I'm gonna testify on 2311, 2298, and 2163. On 2311, we strongly support this bill that would require third-party delivery companies provide customer data to restaurants. This would allow restaurants to, basically, even the playing field, being able to reach out to their customers, to market to them, and really own that delivery customer, who is their customer. Currently, by withholding the data, the third-party delivery companies have enormous leverage over restaurants, because restaurants can't leave the platform, because then essentially, they leave their customers, and then the third-party platform will use that customer data to market to competitor restaurants. So, we strongly support this. This is an urgent bill. We would just ask that it be slightly amended to also require third-party reservation companies to provide customer data to those restaurants, because it's a similar dynamic there, and we want to commend Councilmember Powers on that bill. The second bill is related to restaurants being required to provide toilet facility access. Obviously, our delivery workers have been essential heroes throughout the pandemic, and it is a common courtesy to provide access to their restroom. We surveyed a couple hundred restaurants. The vast majority of them already did provide access, but we do understand, by speaking with delivery workers and their representatives, that that is not always the case. So, while we wish the city had a robust public restroom network, that is not the case, and we support this legislation, we would just ask for two updates to be made. One, we'd like to ensure that any first-time violation would provide a cure period or a warning before a fine is levied. And the second is, we want to ensure that restaurants, within reason, have the ability to set up a policy to allow third-party delivery workers to use their restrooms. And then finally, if I may, real quickly on the last bill. Chair, may I? Yes, thank you so much. And then on this COVID surcharge, I don't have time, obviously, to go over many of the comments that were made earlier. I commend Chef Russell on his comments. He obviously should run his business how he sees fit, and being an advocate out there is something that's really important. However, the 15% surcharge does not work for the vast majority of restaurants from an operational or a financial perspective. Restaurants that want to do surcharges usually fall into two camps. One, a single-digit surcharge. The money goes to gross receipts of the business. They continue to take the tip credit, and that surcharge is used to offset different expenses, which includes wages. The second camp tends to be someone that wants to do an 18% to say 25% surcharge, in which case, customers usually would not leave a tip. And they would pay a straight hourly wage. In some cases, maybe customers would continue to tip. In that case, the tips wouldn't be enough to cover the tip wage compared to the full minimum wage. So, the restaurants would not be taking the tip credit from a practical standpoint. But 15% does not do enough. Losing the tip credit equals a 50% increase in labor costs for tipped workers. Plus, there are additional expenses associated with not taking the tip credit, which will make it even more devastating for restaurants that are shuttering and really teetering on the edge of survival, particularly when the law does require all tipped employees to receive at least $15 an hour, but in most cases, they are earning much, much more. And in fact, throughout the state, and just here in New York, the reason the tip credit is in place, in many reasons, is because a worker-led movement to keep the tip credit in effect. But at 15%, it doesn't do much, because if a restaurant does a 15% surcharge and doesn't take the tip credit, it's not enough to really offset their expenses. And for a consumer, if they see a 15% surcharge, they will probably end up tipping less. And at the outcome, you could see tipped workers even making less money as a result. So, we'd say, drop this bill, or amend it to allow restaurants to do a smaller surcharge, where they would still be required to pay $15 an hour minimum wage, but the workers can earn more, or do a larger surcharge of 15%, say 18% to 25%, in which case, restaurants would not take the tip credit. I think that's a much better balance. It's workable, because as is, I've spoken with so many restaurants, and at 15%, it's just not going to be something that they are going to use. So, I'll leave it at that. I'm happy to answer any questions and speak further about these bills. But again, we strongly support third-party delivery services providing customer data to restaurants. We support requiring restaurants to provide toilet facility access to food delivery workers, presuming those two amendments are made. And we strongly oppose repealing the COVID surcharge and implementing a new 15% surcharge, unless it's modified to provide more flexibility so different types of restaurants can implement the surcharge in a way that works for their business. I want to thank you, Chair, thank you, members, for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andrew. Next up, we have Kathleen Riley, followed by Mikey Nab, and then Maria Figueroa. Kathleen?
Your turn, we'll begin now.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Kathleen Riley with the New York State Restaurant Association, and we'd like to use our time today to discuss the intro regarding data sharing. Other comments will make in writing after the fact, but there's a lot on the table today. The pandemic has exacerbated so many dynamics in our industry, but in particular, restaurants' relationships with food delivery platforms have grown all the more important over the last 16 months. When our city eateries were closed for on-premise dining, then limited to outdoor dining, and strictly capacity-restricted for indoor dining, restaurants relied upon takeout and delivery orders to keep any amount of cash flow coming in. Takeout and delivery sales could not make up for the losses sustained from pandemic limitations, though. In a survey we conducted in partnership with the National Restaurant Association earlier this year, we found that increased takeout and delivery orders made up for under 30% of lost on-premise business for most restaurant operators. Yet, restaurants were still forced to rely on takeout and delivery in order for their businesses to survive until the reopening. And in many cases, that placed restaurant operators in a difficult, can't-live-with-it, can't-live-without-it position towards the food delivery platforms. Thankfully, the city council took the responsible step last spring. Thankfully, the city council took the responsible step last spring to set some boundaries on the fee structures these delivery platforms were charging restaurants, correctly noting that restaurant operators were effectively hamstrung between pandemic restrictions coupled with exploitative fees from these platforms. With fee caps in place, one facet of the relationship was put in check. However, in regards to customer data for third-party food delivery orders, there's still an exploitative dynamic in play. We are so appreciative to Councilmember Powers and the co-sponsors for bringing Intro 2311 forward today and recognizing that this dynamic needs to change. As things currently stand, third-party food delivery platforms control the customer data for orders that they facilitate, which may sound simple enough, but what it means is that restaurants are kept at arms-length from their customers, even repeat customers, even regulars, because platforms do not share critical information like phone number, order history, email address with the restaurant operators and allow them to maintain it. Restaurants work hard to cultivate lasting relationships with their customers and their community. They need to be able to reach out directly to their customers, whether to give an update on an order or offer a promotion. It's restaurants and their quality food and beverage that keep customers coming back to delivery platforms, but then it's only the platforms who are able to form relationships with diners, and that's not right. The New York State Restaurant Association supports the solution offered in Intro 2311, which would give restaurant operators access to the customer data about their own customers and stop the gatekeeping by third-party platforms. It's a reform that our members have been asking for, and we believe it's an important step in leveling the playing field for restaurant ops. Thank you for restaurants operating in a market heavily influenced by these delivery platforms. I also think that what Andrew pointed out around reservation-making platforms is a great point, and I think that they do play a similar kind of role in keeping consumer data from the restaurants themselves. Thank you for your time this afternoon, and we will follow up in writing.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next up, we have Mikey Nab, followed by Maria Figueroa, and then James Parrott. Mikey?
Your time will begin now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Sorry. Hi, my name is Mikey Nab. I'm the co-director of Ray's High Road Restaurants, which is a national network of over 1,000 restaurant owners across the country, including over 100 in New York, who have made commitments to high-road employment practices like increasing wages and improving working conditions. Chef Russell, who spoke earlier, is one of our members. And my members have asked me to come and speak on behalf of the robust industry in New York of restaurants and hospitality professionals that makes New York dynamic and unique in the sense that it contributes so much to the economy. If restaurant workers leave the industry and/or the city at the rates that they're saying they are considering doing it, it will never recover, and the restaurant landscape in the future of New York will be bleak. The restaurants that fund the National Restaurant Association are mostly massive multinational publicly-traded corporations that we would consider low-road employers that have been fighting to suppress wages and subjugate our workforce for decades, almost over 100 years. If that continues to happen, workers will never come back. They'll see the job as exploitative, as Russell mentioned. We need to send a signal to the entire workforce that New York is a magical place for restaurants, that these are good jobs, that we do treat them with dignity and respect. And this surcharge allows restaurants to opt in. It's not required. If restaurants don't want to charge a 15% surcharge and pay one fair wage, they don't need to. But if they can figure out how to run their business the way they want to, as Andrew Ridgey said Russell should do, then they can opt into it. We believe that this would send a signal to the workforce that we're trying our best as an industry to make these jobs professional and treat them with dignity, and also send a message to Albany that you can't just save restaurant owners. You need to save restaurant workers, or else the owners have no way to prepare and distribute the food and offer great service and hospitality to our guests. So I strongly urge you to support this measure, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mikey. Next, we have Maria Figueroa, James, followed by James Parrott, and then Sarah Brothman. Maria?
Your time will begin now.
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Figueroa. I'm Director of Labor and Policy Research at the Worker Institute of Cornell University. Thank you for the opportunity to deliver this testimony, which draws on field research we conducted in partnership with Worker Justice Project. We surveyed more than 500 workers, up-based food delivery workers from all five boroughs and all demographic groups that this diverse workforce comprises. Our findings revealed a range of pressing issues, including low earnings, lack of transparency in payment and evaluation systems, lack of access to bathrooms, and very serious safety hazards, such as exposure to violent crime related to the e-bike theft, and risk of accidents on the road, which workers face without any type of compensation for healthcare expenses and lost work time. Our survey data revealed that the base pay of up-based delivery workers is between $6.57, about $7, and about $8 per hour. This excludes tips and operating expenses, such as cell and internet service, vehicle maintenance, and other expenses. In order for workers to achieve this low level of pay, which is well below legal minimum wages in the city, they have to work long hours and for multiple apps since each individual app does not generate enough work. About two-thirds of survey respondents reported that they regularly work at least six days per week, and 85% said that this was their main and only job. Additionally, about 40% of all survey respondents reported experiencing issues related to payments from the apps, including non-payment and underpayment of tips, receiving lower pay than indicated on the apps, late payments, or non-payment of earnings from an entire work week. We strongly support 2294 and 2296 to increase the base pay that workers receive and regulate the payment system. And we call for new regulation that would require the apps to share their data with the city agencies, such as the DCWP, which would be given an authority similar to the TLCs in collecting data from the Risher platforms. Thank you.
Okay, I see. So we only have translation services available through four, so we're asking members that are here to testify who need the service to please raise their hand so that we can call on them first. I see quite a few, Stephanie.
Yeah, I see. Yep, I see about three. Okay, so why don't we start with Pepe Johnson? I see your hand is raised.
Estás bastante bajita. Tienes que hablar con bastante volumen, por favor. Good afternoon. I'm sorry. It's very hard to hear. Her volume is very low. Regresamos a donde usted, Pepe, entre unos minutos.
Okay, so let's move on to Cesar Marie.
Cesar Marie? Hello, my name is Cesar Marino. I'm a food distributor. I work for Relay. As of two months ago, I suffered an assault while I was doing a delivery. Adelante, señor Marino.
Gracias. Me dura... Para la aplicación, no me dan horas durante el día. Por eso debo tomar horas por la noche, y tengo que ir a dejar las órdenes a larga distancia y lugares donde es muy peligroso porque la compañía no me muestra qué distancia está el cliente, sino hasta que yo recibo la comida del restaurante. Y si me niego a ir a esos lugares donde arriesgo mi vida, el siguiente día me castiga la compañía y no me deja trabajar o me bloquea las horas.
So, the application, I have no hours during the day. I need hours during the night. And then, because there's these long distances, they send me to do these deliveries of very far places, very dangerous places. And then the company does not let me know where it is located until I've received the food. And then if I don't deliver it at that point, they deny me. If I deny delivering to these risky places where I risk my life, the company then punishes me by blocking my hours or not giving me any work. Adelante.
Tengo que ir. Si la aplicación me deja entrar a trabajar, al menos una hora o dos horas al día. Recorro todo el día tratando de entrar a la aplicación, y no, no me deja.
I try to go into the application, and it doesn't let me. I try to go into one or two hours, and I try, but the application does not let me in. Adelante.
La aplicación nos amenaza constantemente que nos va a bloquear nuestra cuenta y no nos da oportunidad ni de tan siquiera hablar con alguien de la compañía. No tienen ningún número de teléfono para comunicarnos con ellos. Así que nosotros para esta compañía somos invisibles.
Permíteme. So the application threatens us. It threatens to block our account, and it never gives us any chance to call anyone to debate the issue. There's no number to communicate or anything. Basically, all its workers are invisible. Adelante.
Señores concejales, pedimos que, por favor, pasen estas leyes por el bien de nosotros, los trabajadores. Gracias.
Councilpeople, I ask you all to please pass, approve this law because it would help us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll call on Gustavo Mansilla.
Gustavo Mansilla?
Your time will begin.
Me permites una oración, después puedo traducir, y después sigues con la próxima oración. En pedacizos. Adelante, por favor.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Gustavo Mansilla. Soy deliveryista y trabajo para las aplicaciones de reparto de comida.
Well, good afternoon. My name is Gustavo Mansilla. I work as a food distributor, and I work for the food distribution apps. Adelante.
Vivo en Manhattan y trabajo por toda la ciudad haciendo deliveries.
I live in Manhattan. I work throughout all the whole city, making deliveries. Adelante.
Soy uno de los muchos trabajadores que sufren del abuso por parte de estas compañías. Estas compañías no son transparentes en cuanto al pago a las propinas.
Permíteme. I'm one of many who suffer the abuse given out by these companies. They're not transparent with the amount of tips that we earn. Adelante.
Por ejemplo, hace unas semanas, un cliente ordenó su comida en cierto restaurante. Cuando le entregué la comida, él me preguntó si yo había recibido la propina.
For example, about a week ago, I was delivering food to a client from one of these restaurants, and after the delivery, the client asked me if I had received the tips. Adelante.
Inmediatamente, yo revisé mi aplicación, y aparecía cero.
I immediately reviewed the application, and zero is what appeared. Adelante.
El cliente me mostró su recibo, y él había pagado 9.60 de propina, lo cual a mí, la aplicación me pagó cero.
The client then showed me his receipts, which showed he gave a $9.60 tip, although my app was showing zero. Adelante.
Cuando yo reclamé por el robo de las propinas, la aplicación culpa a los restaurantes y no quieren darnos ninguna explicación.
When I made a claim about this thievery of tips, the app gave the blame to the restaurant. Adelante.
Constantemente, aplicaciones como Relay nos envían mensajes amenazándonos que no debemos preguntarle al cliente acerca de la propina.
Constantly, the applications like Relay sends us messages threatening us to say not to ask the clients or the customers any information. Adelante.
Que si lo hacemos, nos van a bloquear la cuenta.
And if we do it, they will block our account. Adelante.
Otra forma que estas aplicaciones nos roban los tips es cuando redondean los monedas.
Another way that they rob our tips is when you round off. Se ha vencido el tiempo.
Thank you. Next, we'll call on Roberto Corales, please.
Your time will begin now.
Roberto Corales, me permites una oración, así puedo traducir, y después seguimos adelante con la próxima oración. Adelante.
Hola, mi nombre es Roberto Corales.
My name is Roberto Corales. Adelante.
Necesitamos que no nos dejen en el abandono cuando tenemos un accidente.
We need you not to abandon us when we have an accident. Adelante.
Porque ellos no se quieran ser responsables cuando nos roban las bicicletas de trabajo.
Because they don't want to be responsible when they rob our bikes from work. Adelante.
Nos matan en las calles y también nos roban las propinas.
They kill us on the streets as well as rob us of our tips. Adelante.
Queremos que las aplicaciones sean transparentes tanto los restaurantes también.
We want the apps to be transparent as well as the restaurants. Adelante.
Porque ellos también tienen que ver sobre el robo de propinas.
Because they also have to do with the thieving, the robbing of tips. Adelante.
También queremos que pase esta ley para que nos paguen el salario mínimo, porque también este es un trabajo de verdad.
We also want this law to pass so we can get paid minimum wage because this is a real job.
Y por otro lado, que no haya discriminación porque a veces nosotros pasamos frío y no nos dejan entrar en los restaurantes.
And on the other hand, there's also the discrimination because then we show up, and sometimes they don't even want to let us into the restaurants. Adelante.
Sí, nosotros estamos afuera soportando altas temperaturas tanto bajas. Y somos también parte del sistema de trabajo.
And we're outside dealing with all kinds of temperatures, hot and cold temperatures. We are part of this system.
Yeah, también, las aplicaciones necesitamos que no nos manden más de tres o cinco millas, especialmente cuando el clima no está favorable.
And as far as the apps, we need not to be sent further than two to three miles away from the destination, especially when the climate is to take into account.
Porque para manejar es muy dificultoso. También he visto muchos accidentes, incluso me pasó a mí también.
And managing the distances, like driving around, is not very easy. And I've seen many accidents occurred. I too was involved in an accident. Adelante.
Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll call on Juan Carlos Huerta, followed by Oscar Gonzalez.
Señor Huerta, me permites una oración? Señor Huerta, me permites una oración, traduzco, traducir y después la próxima oración y seguimos así. Adelante.
Permítame un segundo, por favor.
Give me one second, please.
Tengo que poner mi cámara.
Do I have to put on my camera? Adelante, señor.
Okay. Permítame un segundo, okay, no. Hi, how are you? My name is Juan Carlos. I work as a chef in a top restaurants, as well as a consultant for restaurants in several states. Due to COVID, I'm now a delivery worker. I work as a top dasher at DoorDash. I also work for Relay originally. When I seen advertisements for these companies, I thought this line of work will be excellent for my financial and wellbeing. For the time being, however, several issues holds and these companies began to unveil. And I had no idea how to use the app. And there was, and there wasn't a service to show, to show me how. So I was unable to work efficiently or at all times. For example, my first day of working for DoorDash was very difficult. Since I didn't know how to use the app, I had no idea that it was accepting an order from my hand to Brooklyn and forty degrees weather near freezing temperature. There's snow on the ground and it was raining. After my initial delivery, I went home with my clothes soaked, took a hot shower and hope to warming up my body and face. Felt like I had needles because of the wind. That was on February 2021. Was the eighth of the snowiest February in the history of New York. I was physically able to perform anymore deliveries that day and only make sixteen dollars and I got a little sick. In order to be a top dasher, you have to have near a perfect rating from customers and accept most of the orders regardless of the distance. If you're not a top dasher, you cannot simply log in and in or out anytime to work. You are required to serve your hours in advance of the order.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will be calling on Oscar Gonzalez, followed by Pedro Castillo.
Señor Gonzalez, me das una oración, así la puedo traducir, después seguimos a la próxima oración. Adelante.
Buenas tardes.
Sí, lo oigo.
Yo no necesito traducción, pero gracias.
No need for translation.
Okay, so my name is Oscar Gonzalez. I work for Uber Eats, DoorDash and Grubhub. So I have three topics. First one is the activations. They deactivate you without any warning and without you being able to defend yourself against the accusation that was why you got deactivated. And when you call regarding that deactivation, all you get is poor support and they never solve your problems and just give you lame answers and go over the same thing over and over until you get tired of it and stop dealing with them. And when you appeal, if you do, they always deny. So how is that? In conclusion, it is unfair. Second topic is help. Sometimes when you call, you have to wait ten plus minutes to get support when... To answer the call. Meanwhile, the customers are waiting for the food, which makes them mad, obviously, and less likely to order again through that app, which makes us all less money because they're ordering somewhere else or directly through the restaurant delivery services they have. Um... When you need help with anything associated with your account, for example, you need to update your vehicle mode, your name or your picture. You can't, except with Grubhub. They let you change your picture. And they tell you that they don't know how to solve your concern or what is the process to solve it. And if they don't know, who knows? And the third topic and last one is promotions. They offer you X amount of money if you complete a certain amount of deliveries. I'll complete them in a certain amount of time just to tell you after that...
Your time has expired.
That you didn't complete all the deliveries or didn't do it in time. And when you called to solve it, they just transferred to another department that deals with that, from which you never ever get any type of answers, either good or bad. Doesn't matter if you provide any proof or not. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to announce also that you may submit your written testimony at the email address testimony@council.nyc.gov.
También queremos indicar que pueden dar su testimonios en escrito, solo escribiéndolo, redactándolo y enviándolo al correo electrónico testimony@council.nyc.gov.
Thank you. Now we'll continue with Pedro Castillo, followed by Juan Reynoso.
Pedro Castillo, si hablas español, me das una oración, me permites traducir y seguimos adelante. Adelante.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon. Adelante.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Pedro Castillo. Vivo en Queens, tengo dos hijos, trabajo en DoorDash y en Relay.
My name is Pedro Castillo, I have two kids, I live in Queens, I work with Relay and another app. Adelante.
Al trabajar haciendo el delivery para cualquiera de estas aplicaciones, siento que me estoy volviendo muy resgoso ante mi familia, trae...
Doing delivery work using these apps, I feel like I'm putting myself at risk and in too much risk for my family. Adelante.
Estas aplicaciones ignoran cualquier situación que nos puedan pasar y nos presionan demasiado.
These applications ignore any situation that could happen to us and they pressure us constantly. Adelante.
Para entregar las órdenes a distancias lejos y no nos den los riesgos.
They have us deliver at distances that are very far and they do not see the risks. Adelante.
Hace tres semanas tuve un accidente. Un carro me impactó y fue muy grande. Me partí la cabeza y la clavícula y bicicleta se estrosó.
About three weeks ago, I had an accident. I was hit by a car. It was really big. It opened up my head, broke my clavicle and my bike was destroyed. Adelante.
Gracias a Dios, estoy vivo.
Thank God I'm alive. Adelante.
No sé cuánto tiempo pueda seguir en recuperación, pero estoy muy preocupado. No sé cómo pagar mi renta, no sé cómo dar comida a mi familia. Estoy paralizado, no voy a pagar, no tengo cómo pagar los billos del hospital, no cuento con un seguro.
Time has expired.
Se ven, soy el tempo. I don't know how much time I can continue with my recuperation. I am very worried. I don't have anything to pay my rent, feed my family. I'm paralyzed. I have no way to earn a living.
Estas aplicaciones deberían ser más conscientes de sus trabajadores, apoyarnos.
These applications should be more conscious of their workers and help with helping us.
Necesitamos que esas compañías paguen un salario mínimo y nos brinden una protección. Es necesario que estas leyes pasen para que nos podamos sentir confiados y poder salir a trabajar.
We need these companies to pay a minimum wage and to give us some kind of protection. These laws need to pass so that we can feel, we can trust, working with them.
Y que se vuelvan responsables de nosotros y poder trabajar con dignidad y respeto. Muchas gracias.
And then become responsible for us so that we can work with dignity and respect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'd like to call next Juan Reynoso and followed by Isabel Navarro.
Gracias. Señor Reynoso, me permites una oración, le puedo traducir y después seguimos con la próxima oración. Adelante.
Your time will begin.
Sí, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Juan Reynoso, soy de Guatemala y vivo en el Bronx.
Good afternoon, my name is Juan Reynoso. I come from Guatemala and I live in the Bronx. Adelante, Reynoso.
Llevo trabajando dos años en la aplicación de DoorDash y Grubhub.
I've been working for two years with the application DoorDash and Grubhub. Adelante.
Estoy trabajando de diez a doce horas diarias y estoy ganando de cien a ciento veinte diarios, que es un... Es muy poco, ya no alcanza para los billes.
I've worked ten to twelve hours each day and I earn about a hundred to a hundred and twenty dollars a day, which is very little, it's not enough for a living to pay any bills. Adelante.
Lo que nosotros le pedimos a las compañías que nos den un salario digno. ¿Qué quiere decir con esto, que nos pague por hora?
We are asking the companies to give us a dignifying wage. And what do I mean by that is for them to pay us per hour. Adelante.
Porque actualmente, en caso de DoorDash y Grubhub, si no hago ni un delivery en una hora, en dos horas, prácticamente no recibimos pero ni un dólar, absolutamente.
Like for in the present time with DoorDash and Grubhub, if I don't deliver within one or two hours, then I don't even get a dollar of payment. Adelante.
Tengo un caso muy especial de mi persona. Durante un mes perdí dos bicicletas y cada una vale más de mil quinientos, son tres mil.
I have a specific situation in my case. In one month, I lost two bikes. Each bike being one thousand five hundred, that's three thousand. Adelante.
Y al llegar el mes, ya no encuentro qué voy a hacer. Si voy a comprar otra bicicleta o voy a pagar mi renta y para mi familia. Tengo dos hijas, entonces cuesta mucho decidir qué voy a hacer.
And then by the end of the month, I find myself asking myself, what do I do? Do I use my money to buy another bike? Do I pay rent? Do I feed my family? I have two daughters. I find myself in a predicament. Adelante.
Además, nosotros los deliveryistas, las compañías nos tienen como un contrato de independiente, que nosotros tenemos que ver con nuestros equipos. Comprar bicicleta, comprar traje de agua, reparaciones, comida. Entonces nosotros compramos todo nuestro equipo.
And then furthermore, the delivery companies, us as delivery people, the companies indicate that we're independent contractors. So then that leaves us having to get our own equipment, our own raincoat, repairs, get our own food. Adelante.
Mantener a una familia con esos sueldos de cien diarios, creo que no somos capaces de darle una buena vida a nuestra familia.
Trying to support ourselves with this kind of money about a hundred dollars a day, it's not possible. How are we supposed to give our families a better life? Adelante.
Necesitamos la ayuda de las autoridades que nos apoyen y que hablemos con las compañías que lleguemos a un acuerdo y que recibamos un sueldo fijo para todos.
We need the help for the authorities to support us, to talk to these companies, to reach some sort of agreement so we can get a fair wage. Adelante.
Solamente, muchas gracias.
That's all, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll call on Isabel Navarro and then Pepe Johnson.
Gracias. Señorita Navarro, me permites una oración, puedo traducir y después siguiente oración. Gracias. Adelante.
Sí, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Isabel Navarro.
Good afternoon, my name is Isabel Navarro. Adelante.
Soy deliveryista en el Bronx. Tengo dos hijos que dependen de mí. Trabajo para las aplicaciones de reparto de comida desde hace seis meses y para hacer quinientos dólares tengo que trabajar más de cuarenta y cinco horas a la semana.
So I live in the Bronx, I have two kids. I work as a delivery person now for six months. For me to get five hundred dollars, I have to work over forty-five hours. Adelante.
Necesitamos que estas compañías paguen un salario mínimo por orden para que al menos podamos cubrir los gastos que se requieren para hacer este trabajo.
We need the companies to pay at least a minimum amount per hour because that way we could cover all any other costs that are involved with this job. Adelante.
Con tres dólares por orden es difícil poder cubrir todos nuestros gastos que conllevan hacer este trabajo.
With three dollars per order, it's very difficult for us even to cover the costs that are needed just to bring about the job. Adelante.
Además, a veces estas compañías nos brindan la dirección diferente al destino que es.
Furthermore, the companies sometimes give us addresses that are very different from the actual addresses where the deliveries are supposed to go. Adelante.
Incluso, cuando den más órdenes apenas nos alcanza para pagar los gastos para trabajar como deliveryistas.
In fact, the more orders they give us, the harder it is to cover all the costs needed just to be a delivery person. Adelante.
Estas compañías nos deben brindar también las herramientas necesarias para hacer este trabajo, como ser como las bolsas térmicas de buena calidad, ya que a mí me ha pasado que se me han roto cuando he entregado los deliveries.
And the company should also give us all the necessary tools to bring about the job. For instance, like those thermal bags or the bags to keep the food warm or whatever. I've had occasions where they've broken on me on my way to bringing food to the client, customer. Adelante.
Básicamente estamos ganando alrededor de diez dólares por hora y los riesgos que conllevan hacer este trabajo son muy altos, incluso a nosotros como mujeres.
Basically, what we're earning here is ten dollars an hour and the risks involved to do this job are very high. And furthermore, I am a woman doing it. Adelante.
Y yo les pregunto a ustedes, ¿quién puede vivir en la ciudad de Nueva York con diez dólares por hora?
And I ask you all, who could live in the city of New York on ten dollars an hour? Adelante.
Y tener que comprar todas las herramientas para hacer este trabajo como conlleva a las bolsas de trabajo y equipo para nosotros mismos, transporte y seguro médico, ya que en mi caso yo también he tenido accidentes.
And then on top of that, we have to buy our own tools, bags, our own equipment, transportation, even medical insurance. And in my case, I also had an accident on doing this job. Adelante.
Necesitamos que se paguen estos billes para que las compañías nos paguen un salario que nos permitan vivir con dignidad. Muchas gracias.
We need these bills to be paid so that the companies can pay us a dignified wage so we can continue living and earning a living. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to call on Pepe Johnson next, please.
Pepe Johnson, me permites una oración, después puedo traducir y seguimos adelante. Adelante.
Your time will begin.
¿Me oyes?
Sí, la oigo.
Okay, muchas gracias. Mira, mi nombre es Pepe Johnson, soy de West Africa y hago delivery con todos los diferentes tipos de aplicaciones como Google, DoorDash, Grubhub, Postman, ya como dos años.
My name is Pepe Johnson, I'm from West Africa and I work using these apps, Uber, Eats, DoorDash, Grubhub for about two years now. Adelante.
Mira, el mayor de los problemas en los que me enfrento yo personalmente como mujer y yo sé que muchas mujeres que ya entraron en ese delivery también enfrentan el mismo problema como yo, es el no tener acceso a los baños.
The problem I have with the job, like many other women, me being as a woman and I'm sure other women have the same problem, is access to a bathroom. Adelante.
Mira, usar el baño es una necesidad de ser humano y la compañía de delivery tiene que tener en cuenta que el deliveryista no controla el lugar de recoger órdenes ni dónde entregar las órdenes. Lo que nos obliga está a cinco, diez kilómetros de nuestras casas.
Using the bathroom is a human necessity and the companies need to take this into account when they're sending it to all these places that are further than five, six kilometers away from our home. Adelante. when they're sending it to all these places that are further than five, six kilometers away from our home. Adelante.
Estamos a distancias muy largas, como cinco o tres, aunque fuera tres kilómetros de nuestra casa, obligatoriamente si tenemos necesidad física solo lo podemos hacer usando los baños de los restaurantes, que no nos lo permite.
So even if you're just going about three kilometers away and then you find yourself having to use a bathroom, the only bathroom you could really use is the restaurants and the restaurants deny us. Adelante.
Y otra de la razón por la cual lo necesitamos de urgencia es también que no controlamos las condiciones climáticas, del clima.
And the other reason we need it so urgently is because we can't also control the situation with the climate. Adelante.
Por ejemplo, en verano, en el verano necesitamos hidratarlo muchísimo y usando las bicicletas más necesidad tenemos para hidratarlo y usar los baños.
And then during the summer, we have to hydrate constantly, right? And we're using our bikes and we're going around, so we're going to need to use the bathrooms at some point.
Por esta razón yo lo pido al gobierno, incluyendo la compañía, para que entienda y que y que hable con nosotros para que los restaurantes nos dé opción o que nos permiten poder usar sus baños.
And that's why I'm asking for the government and the companies to try to understand and to speak for us because the restaurants should at least give us the option of using the bathrooms.
Perdón, uno de los pedidos especial, innecesario que yo hago con la compañía, que yo pido que la compañía haga con nosotros es la seguridad de nosotros en la calle como en los buildings, porque ellos no se hacen responsables pero no exige a nosotros más.
And the last thing that I'm asking for also is for a special need for me that has to do with safety, safety in the streets, safety for us when we are traveling around. We need this.
Porque los clientes como tal, que eso también necesitamos que eso llega a la comunicación para que los clientes entiendan que la compañía no se hace responsable de cualquier cosa que nos pasa dentro de un building como fuera de un building. Por esto que mucho no quiere subir algunos buildings que son buildings de peligro, que son peligrosos para nosotros.
And I think the clients must understand that the company does not help us in finding out where we have to go and the high risk of going into some of these buildings.
Si la compañía no se hace responsable de todo lo que nos pasa, entonces no deberían castigarnos, decalificándonos y cancelándonos la cuenta por no subir alguno.
If the company is not responsible to know what's happening to us, nor should they punish us by blocking us from our account or the app when we decide not to go up into some high-risk building.
Porque la verdad tenemos compañeros que han muerto y la compañía ni sabe su nombre, ni se acuerdan de ellos y es triste. Gracias.
In fact, we have colleagues, coworkers that have died and the company was not even aware or did anything about it to help us. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Gracias por su testimonio.
Next we'll be calling on James Parrott, followed by Sarah Brathman, and then Brian Chen. James?
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I support INTRO 2294 to establish a minimum per trip payment to third-party food service workers. This measure builds on the highly successful minimum pay standard for four higher-vehicle drivers established in December 2018 by the City's Tax and Limousine Commission, following passage of authorizing legislation passed by the Council in August of 2018. I co-authored a study for the TLC analyzing the need for the New York City driver pay standard and also co-authored a July 2020 study for the city of Seattle analyzing the need for a similar minimum driver pay standard that was enacted in August of 2020. In both cities, the driver pay standards were designed to compensate drivers for all their working time and to account fully for drivers' vehicle and other expenses during all of their working time. In an evaluation of the first year of the New York City App Dispatch Driver Pay Standard, our research found a high rate of compliance and that driver pay had increased by about nine percent for a dollar and thirty-three cents per trip. Total driver pay increased by three hundred and forty million dollars for the eleven months of 2019 that the pay standard was in effect. Passenger wait times declined and some of the pay increase was absorbed through lower effective commission rates taken by the companies. While passenger fares rose and trip volumes leveled off and declined some in the latter part of 2019, these trends were also evident in Chicago where a minimum pay standard was not implemented. INTRO 2294 appropriately calls for a study of third-party food delivery worker per trip pay and the methods by which that pay is determined, hours worked, and an analysis of delivery worker expenses, as well as other pertinent factors and issues. The TLC's ability to effectively regulate driver pay and ensure a high rate of compliance depends in part on the authority the TLC has exercised to require the app companies to provide data on all trips, payments to drivers, hours worked, and miles driven. It will be important for the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection to have the authority to similarly compel data sharing by third-party delivery services. This is particularly crucial given the experience of delivery workers regarding tip theft and significant data transparency problems. Delivery workers are among the heroes of the pandemic. At great personal health risk, they responded to the explosion in demand for food service delivery over the past year, providing a tremendous service to remote working and homebound New Yorkers and to struggling restaurant owners. Yet they were forced to endure tip theft and extensive payment problems from the delivery companies. They had to deal on their own with the dignity of finding a place to use the bathroom and confronting a wave of bicycle thefts that jeopardized their livelihoods. As contractors, they have no employee rights, no paid sick days, and virtually no access to a worker's safety net. Irony or not, the jobs that increased the most during the pandemic were those most devoid of basic worker rights and protections. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Lander has his hand raised. Councilmember?
Thanks very much, James. Thank you for the work you did to make it possible for us to do the study and then establish the driver minimum pay for Uber and Lyft. I appreciate your point and the commissioner made a similar one about the need to compel data from the delivery apps in order to be able to really do this study. Do you think that that needs to be included in our legislation? Do we need to amend the legislation or have companion legislation to require the companies to provide that data so that we can do what's necessary to figure out the minimum pay approach?
I do think that as in the case of the TLC, that company access to do business in New York City should be conditioned on their providing data sharing to appropriate city agencies. So I think you're going to have to legislate that in order to require the companies to do that.
Super. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have Sarah Brathman and then Brian Chen and finally Andrew Stetner. Sarah?
Your time will begin.
Thank you, Chairala, Councilmember Reynoso, and members of the committee for the opportunity to testify today. I will speak on INTRO 2163, a critical piece of legislation for New York City restaurant workers. I am senior policy counsel at A Better Balance, a national legal nonprofit headquartered in New York City. Our mission is to advance justice for workers so they can care for themselves and their loved ones without compromising their economic security. Here in New York City, we're proud to have helped lead advocacy efforts to support working families, including New York City Paid Sick and Safe Time, Fair Work Week laws, and protections for pregnant and caregiving workers. The subminimum wage for tipped workers is in effect legislated gender inequity for predominantly female disproportionately women of color workforce perpetuating the gender pay gap. Two-thirds of tipped workers are women disproportionately women of color and of particular importance to us, nearly forty percent of them are mothers. In fall 2020, as you heard, restaurants were permitted to charge customers a ten percent surcharge. Many customers thought the surcharge was a tip that would benefit workers, not owners, and so reduce their tips as a result, sometimes in half. INTRO 2163 doesn't completely resolve this problem, but at least would remedy the particular problems set by the ten percent surcharge, allowing restaurant owners to implement a surcharge of up to fifteen percent. So long as they pay their tipped employees a full minimum wage with tips on top, will persuade more restaurant owners to share the benefits of the surcharge with their workers rather than have the surcharge cause further harm. And I just want to say something about the preemption question and it's important to emphasize that this bill does not run afoul of any limitations on this council's ability to regulate minimum, the subminimum wage. No state law expressly prohibits such a restaurant surcharge. In fact, state law appears entirely silent on the issue of business surcharges. And while New York State's minimum wage law has been interpreted as preempting local minimum wage increases, it is not the case that it would preempt voluntary incentives like this one that encourage employers to pay workers a wage higher than the minimum set by the state. So I'll just end by saying INTRO 2163 is a pivotal policy to ensure the quality and economic security for New York City's restaurant workers. There's more in our written testimony about all of these issues and especially the preemption issue, which is a non-issue. Thank you very much and we look forward to working with the council to enact 2163. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we'll be calling on Brian Chen, followed by Andrew Stetner, and then Gonzalo Mercado.
Your time will begin.
Good afternoon and thank you to the committee for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Brian Chen and I'm an attorney at the National Employment Law Project, a national nonprofit policy organization that advocates for good jobs and good policies for workers. NLP strongly supports the deliveryistas and their five bills being considered today by the council and I'm submitting a longer written statement, but for time I'm going to highlight just two things for the committee today. The first, these bills are basic protections for an underpaid workforce that is majority immigrant, majority person of color, and that has virtually zero workplace rights under the law as it is now. As some have noted, because these workers are called independent contractors by their employers, they have no practical access to a guaranteed minimum wage, overtime pay, workers' compensation, paid sick leave, and basic health and safety standards under New York state law. And without those state protections, delivery workers are often on the precipice of devastation. So these bills being considered today are long overdue and will help establish a baseline of stability and decent work for workers who are among the most underpaid, marginalized, and exploited. The second point is that greater worker protections and regulation will bring stability to the food delivery industry over the long run. As it is now, app-based food delivery is really like the Wild West. It is dramatically underregulated and therefore very easy for big corporations to exploit workers, diners, and restaurants. If we want to sustain this business model, we need to start with making sure that the delivery workers have basic protections against low pay and difficult conditions. And in cities that have legislative gig worker protections before, the sky has not fallen. Seattle has passed premium pay and paid sick leave for app-based workers and the industry adapted and moved on. Philadelphia passed paid sick leave, the industry adapted and moved on. And here in New York, minimum pay for Uber and Lyft drivers resulted in a nine percent increase in driver pay. The reality is that these common sense protections will bring greater stability to an industry that New York City has come to depend on. These bills are good for food delivery workers, for customers, and for restaurants. We strongly support this package of bills and urge the city council to pass them into law. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Let's see. Next we have Andrew Stetner, followed by Gonzalo Mercado and Irene Lu. Andrew?
Your time will begin.
Good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to testify in support of INTRO 2163. My name is Andrew Stetner. I'm a senior fellow at the Century Foundation. We're an independent think tank based here in New York. Over the past year, we played a leading role in understanding the impact of COVID-19 on the economy. I commend the council for this concerning this action to rectify deep injustice in the state's wage structure. Under current law, tipped workers currently can be paid as little as ten dollars per hour, which is only thirteen thousand dollars per year for someone who averages twenty-five hours per week. While the city does not have direct authority to raise this wage, it should do everything in its power to incentivize wage increases. This disparity is even worse for women and people of color who experience the highest rates of sexual harassment compared to any other industry. Providing a minimum wage would help to alleviate the pressure facing women workers. This proposal properly amends a surcharge originally put into place during the pandemic to support restaurants. The original ten percent surcharge benefited employers with more revenue, yet did not require businesses to pass along the revenue to service workers. This proposed legislation would facilitate the recovery of the economy. With in-person dining reopening, city restaurateurs are bemoaning a labor shortage. Focused groups of immigrant workers connected by the Century Foundation found that many had left the restaurant sector for other work during the pandemic due to the fear of infection or decline in earnings. These employers who are complaining about worker shortage are really suffering from a wage shortage. With a full minimum wage, workers who will be able to better provide for themselves and employers who can attract new workers and preserve their talent would both be able to benefit from the spill. In conclusion, we all know that restaurants are at the heart of New York City's consumer economy. Nothing is more important to the city's recovery than supporting the sector and the workers that are heart of it. INTRO 2163 is a bold and powerful step in the right direction.
Thank you. Before we continue, I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Rosenthal has joined us. Next we have Gonzalo Mercado, followed by Irene Lu, and then Lisa Orman. Gonzalo?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Gonzalo Mercado, Director of Transnational Initiatives for the National Day Labor and Organizing Network, ANDILON. Very happy to provide testimony today. ANDILON's mission is to provide, improve the lives of day laborers, migrant, and low-wage workers. We build leadership and power among those facing injustice so they can challenge inequality and expand labor, civil, and political rights for all. Today, we stand in support of New York City food delivery workers who despite the essential labor provided to keep New Yorkers fed and restaurants running during the worst public health emergency of our generation, while enduring inhumane treatment, wage theft, lack of bathroom access, exclusion from government aid, and even death due to traffic accidents and violent robberies of their electric bikes. This is a pattern that affects app-based food delivery workers not only in New York City but nationwide and around the world, while corporations see their profits grow on the back of essential and excluded workers. Deliveryistas have been providing this essential work a long time before the pandemic and as New York City is reopening, this set of bills and protections are a starting point to recognize the dignity and value that food delivery workers deserve from all New Yorkers. In the interest of time, I'm not going to list all of the bills, but I want to make sure that it's noted that we support all of them. By passing this legislative package, New York City can set a model for how localities across the country and around the world can protect the deliveryistas from the exploitation of these apps and make sure that no matter how a worker is classified, every worker has dignity and respect. We applaud the work of the Workers Justice Project and Deliveryistas Unidos. WJP is a member of ANDILON's sixteen-member organizations nationwide and we remain committed to support their efforts to bring recognition and basic dignity to New York City's food delivery workers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we'd like to call Irene Lu, followed by Lisa Orman, and then Austin Horst. Irene?
Your time will begin.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Irene Lu and I am a policy analyst at the Community Service Society of New York, a nonprofit that works to lift up low-income New Yorkers. While CSS is supportive of the entire package of bills before the committee today, I'll focus on two of them. INTRO 2294 to establish a minimum pay standard for third-party delivery workers and INTRO 2163 to allow restaurants to raise the recovery surcharge that require employers to pay their workers a full minimum wage of fifteen dollars an hour. First, I would like to highlight our support for INTRO 2294. Throughout the pandemic, app-based delivery workers have braved the risk of exposure to COVID-19 to keep New Yorkers fed. Yet, as we've heard today from so many, these workers, many of them low-income and workers of color, continue to struggle with feeding their own families and making the rent. Based on the unheard third, CSS's annual survey- Basically, based on the unheard third, CSS's annual survey of low-income New Yorkers, we find that the city's app-based gig workers experience food and housing insecurity as well as difficulties with accessing affordable healthcare at much higher rates than regular employees. Compared to regular employees, app-based gig workers were more likely to go hungry, to fall behind on their rent, or delay necessary medical care. App-based gig workers were also more likely to worry about their finances and their ability to make ends meet. Establishing a minimum payment for each trip would be a small but critical first step to improving the economic security of third-party delivery workers who are currently classified as independent contractors and are denied a fifteen-dollar minimum wage and other essential rights granted to employees. We would also like to express our support for intro twenty-one sixty-three, specifically the provision of the bill mandating restaurant employers to pay their workers the full fifteen-dollar minimum wage without using tips to make up the difference between the lower tipped wage of ten dollars an hour and the full wage. Similar to the widespread hardship that we saw among app-based gig workers in our unheard-third survey data, our previous research has also shown that workers relying on tips suffer higher levels of poverty and hardship than workers covered by the full minimum wage. Guaranteeing restaurant workers a full minimum wage would help ensure predictable income and improve financial stability for this workforce. Low wages, long hours, and adequate safety standards have become the norm for the city's delivery and restaurant workers. For too long, the city has enabled delivery platforms, app-based companies to circumvent labor laws by allowing these companies to choose little to no, with little to no oversight, how to compensate their workers, how they should be protected. We strongly urge the council to pass the entire package of bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. Next, we'd like to call Lisa Orman, followed by Austin Horse, and then Richard Robbins. Lisa?
Your time will begin.
Hi, my name is Lisa Orman. I am the Chief of Strategy at Open Plans and the Director of Streetopia Upper West Side. On the Upper West Side, we've been fighting for decades for safer bike infrastructure. For many, this is about getting their kids to school safely or being able to bike to work safely. For others, like delivery workers, the streets are literally their working conditions. They risk their lives day in and day out in order to feed people in the city, which became even more necessary and visible over the past year. Ken Coghlan, a board member of Streets PAC and a board member of Manhattan Community Board Seven, recently proposed a resolution on the Upper West Side at CB seven simply asking restaurants to allow delivery workers to use their bathrooms. Listening during these meetings has been both saddening and maddening, but it's also exposed so many people to the idea that working conditions for delivery workers are not fair, just, or humane. I am proud that the city council is discussing these vital bills. Los Deliveristas and all delivery workers deserve a fair wage, transparency with their tips, safe and fair working conditions, including bike infrastructure, and a place to use the bathroom. Tonight, we'll be back at CB seven fighting a bid to ban e-bikes from protected bike lanes. Make no mistake, this resolution is targeted directly at Deliveristas. We need to support our essential workers, not target them again and again. We strongly support the passage of these bills. We hope that future bills will address the app's incentive structures which force delivery workers to choose between getting paid and following all of the traffic laws. Instead of blaming workers for biking the wrong way or going too fast, let's figure out what, why they feel the need to deliver meals so quickly and change that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Austin Horse, followed by Richard Robbins. Austin?
Hi there. Thank you so much. Um, I actually come to speak really to some history with, with food delivery in New York City. I was uh, been a food delivery person. I started doing that in two thousand and six, actually, before these apps came along. And at that time, we actually had great relationships. You would often work for just a restaurant or a group of restaurants. And it was, it was a much better environment. I would routinely make twenty to twenty-five dollars an hour doing that. It was very reliable. It was actually, once app companies started to compete with us, that I was laid off from restaurants as they switched from having the in-house delivery model to this third-party independent contractor model because it was cheaper for the restaurants. So as far as regulation going to either, either to, to affect these restaurants and force them to allow bathroom access and maybe even charge them a little bit more for, for their delivery people, this is a good thing because they made this switch um, almost ten years ago when they went off of, when they went to the apps. And then for the third-party apps, for the independent contractors, they operate with a, an independent contractor model that shields them from, from workers' comp. So any other delivery business utilizing bikers needs to pay thirty to forty dollars, thirty to forty, thirty to forty cents on the dollar for every payroll, for, for payroll, which is a huge burden. And so they're already existing outside of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. Finally, we have Richard Robbins. Richard?
Your time will begin.
I thank you very much. My name is Richard Robbins. I live on the Upper West Side and I'm testifying my personal capacity, not as a CB seven board member. As someone who cares about transportation safety in New York City, I've been to countless transportation meetings. Without fail, at these meetings, people call for greater enforcement of bikes and e-bikes. While I ride a bike for transportation, I wanted to better understand delivery rider's experience and signed up for DoorDash. Last month, I tried working and followed every traffic law, stopping at every red light. In one hour, I got no orders, making no money. Then this past Sunday, in the ninety-degree heat, DoorDash sent me alerts about how busy they were, so I tried again. In ninety minutes, while following every law, I made three deliveries and earned twenty-two dollars and fifty cents, exactly minimum wage, only because they were really busy. Incidentally, my last delivery was picking up dinner that my wife ordered at Olive's for forty-seven dollars, three hours of work. In doing this, I saw a number of troubling issues. New York City already has laws that businesses must provide delivery cyclists with unique three-digit ID number tags, reflective apparel with the business name and the bicyclists, bicyclist's three-digit ID number and a helmet. But the third-party delivery services evade these laws as well as minimum wage law, liability laws, OSHA bathroom requirements and requirements to provide equipment by making delivery cyclists independent contractors. In fact, DoorDash did not even inform me of the New York City laws when I signed up for their service. We need to fix this. Further, DoorDash didn't, uh, the DoorDash system didn't provide apartment numbers and the messaging systems to customers didn't work. It told me to leave food outside and take a picture. After the first customer yelled at me, the second delivery rang every one of the fifteen buzzers in the building to alert the person that her quarter-pounder was downstairs. I couldn't believe I was doing it. And now I see why delivery riders wake me up doing that in my book. Upton Sinclair wrote, "It is difficult for a man to understand something when his salary depends on, is not understanding it." If we want to make our streets safer for all the pedestrians who are terrified of bikes, not to mention for our delivery cyclists, we need to address the economic issue. Without a fair wage, you can't expect delivery workers to follow laws. We also need to make third-party delivery companies accountable, ideally by making
time as explained.
employees and not independent contractors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If we have inadvertently missed anyone who was registered to testify today and has yet to be called, please use the Zoom raise hand function and you will be called on in the order that your hand was raised. Seeing no hands raised, I will now turn it over to Chairala to offer closing remarks. Chair?
Thank you. Um, I just really, really want to thank all of you for coming today, for staying, for exercising patience. I know it's been a long hearing, but it's an important hearing. Um, and I think that we've all learned a lot today about what it takes to be a Deliverista in New York City and all of the ways that we can make this better. It has been my pleasure to chair this hearing today and I look forward to passing this, uh, this setup of, of bills relatively soon. So thank you all. And with that, this hearing is adjourned.